The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Mrs. Robin Margrave of Our Lady of Adam Church.
Great, and if you would, if you wish to rise, you're free to do so. And if you could remain standing, if you stand afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Hamm.
Let us pray. God of all, we humbly stand before you mindful of our need for your guidance and wisdom. As this election year begins, help us to recognize all that unites us and to act for the common good of all. Help us to make just and fair decisions so that we may continue to build a strong and compassionate community. We pray for each person in attendance at this meeting. May we be mindful of the freedoms we enjoy, especially the freedom to speak our minds and engage in civil discourse. We thank you for all who serve our community, for those who teach our children and keep our community safe, for those who maintain our parks and our beaches and our streets, for those who tend to the sick and sorrowing, and especially for those who govern. We remember especially all in our community who go without, those who are ill, and those who live in fear or loneliness. Gracious God, we bring to you our hopes and our burdens. Here are our prayers. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready? Begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilmember James?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Potem Ferguson?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a presentation by Justin Barardino, Operations Manager with the Orange County Register of Voters concerning implementation of California Voters Choice Act, which provides additional ways in which to cast ballots commencing with the March 3, 2020 presidential primary election.
Thank you, Council, for having me here today. Appreciate it. So I'm going to give a brief overview on the vote centers, which is actually, we are in the voting period now. Voting started yesterday, so the first time that Orange County has been voting under the vote center model, and it's already underway. We have drop boxes placed throughout the county. We have some in San Clemente, which I'll show you in a later slide. And those drop boxes are open. Vote-by-mail ballots are being mailed out. Our voter information guides are all mailed out, so this is it. We're actually in voting for 2020. It has begun. So one of the things that led to the vote center model is the growth in vote-by-mail voting over the years. You can see since 2002 to now, vote-by-mail, people requesting vote-by-mail ballots on their own without us even prompting them has gone up to 1.1 million of our 1.6 million voters. So with vote-center voting, which has now started, everybody gets a vote-by-mail ballot in the mail. But you can see by the trends here that that was kind of the projected path we were on anyways, by voters naturally requesting their own vote-by-mail ballots. The other big change in voter habits is voters returning their ballots by returning them in person. So you can see each year, it's grown and grown to 2018, where 175,000 of our voters turned in their vote-by-mail ballot in person at a polling place. So this vote-center voting that I'm talking about has three components. One, I already mentioned, everybody in the county is getting a vote-by-mail ballot. There's still going to be in-person voting. The difference is, instead of 1,000 polling places that are assigned and you're required to go to that specific polling place, now we have 188 vote centers throughout the county, and you can go to any one you want. Additionally, 38 of those vote centers will be open for 11 days, and 188 will be open four days. So the Saturday before the election up to Election Day. And again, you can vote at any one of those locations. If you're at work and you want to vote on your lunch hour, you can just find the nearest location and go vote. We have helpful tools and apps on our website that help you find the closest one to wherever you are. You can put in an address, or if you're on a smartphone, it'll just find the nearest based on your current location. We think that this will increase security for a couple reasons. The electronic poll books create an extra level of security because they help poll workers, or we don't call them poll workers anymore, vote-center staff members, help them to better locate voters who are voting. Additionally, everybody who's working in this new model, they're hired employees of the county. So they go through the hiring process and background checks, and instead of volunteer one day of training, they go through a whole week of training. Another advantage is that vote centers, you can do anything you could do at our office, you can do at a vote center. So there's no reason to come into our office. You can change your registration. You can request a different party's ballot. You can get a replacement ballot. Drop boxes is the other component. 110 of these are installed throughout the county. They're very, they're very, they're very tough, weigh 1,000 pounds, and have multiple levels of security. San Clemente specifically, we have 111-day voting site open at San Clemente Community Center, and we have three sites that will be open for four days: San Clemente Aquatic, San Clemente Library, and the Bellari Resort. There's two drop boxes here: Jim Johnson Memorial Park and at the City Hall. Thank you for approving the use of the drop boxes. And just a couple notes, too. This election is a primary election, a presidential primary, which means non, no-party-preference voters can request a Democratic, American Independent, or Libertarian ballot. It's very easy. They can do it at the vote center. They can call our office and do it over the phone, or they can go to our website, and when they look up their registration, if they're no-party-preference, it'll allow them to request one of those ballots. And of course, as everybody says all the time, follow us online, on social media, on Twitter, on Facebook. And there's a wealth of information on our website and in our social media. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions? Great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for having me, once again.
And I assume we have this PowerPoint so we can put it on our website, if it's not already? Great.
Next item is toll road update, and I do have two cards on this.
First is Ryan Bork, followed by Michelle Schumacher.
I have three minutes on this. Hopefully, I'll be done in about 15 seconds. The public scoping period for the SCTRE is due by 5:00 p.m. on February 7, so we're just about out of time. I urge anybody who's looking at the different plans to vote for a no-bill vote, or at least be informed of the different routes that they're discussing. So that email is scoping, S-C-O-P-A-N-G, at sctre.org. So we look forward to your reply, and those comments are supposed to go a long way. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. Ms. Schumacher?
Hi, good evening, Council. I'm so thankful Ryan brought that up. We do have two more days to get in public comments on the options for the toll road proposals. You can go to No Toll Road on the Facebook, and there's a, the email address is right there with some other comments that other people and groups in the community have made. The second thing is, we're pretty concerned about this process, as usual. If you look at the scoping email address, it's not a government-issued email address. You know, we went to the open houses. They're really slick, clearly consultant-run. We are not certain that Caltrans is actually getting these comments. I got a ding back the other day from an email I sent, and they were still announcing the November comment period in the response email, so it's clearly not something that's being monitored. But if it's the TCA, they're probably, you know, paying someone $300 an hour to be reading our comments. So the other thing I wanted to bring up are the Brown Act violations that are just continuous at the TCA meetings. There was a pretty significant one in November, which I'll be sharing an email with you guys soon on that, but it's kind of how they get away with these bad policies. None of the options that were sent to Caltrans were even voted on by the board, another example of just kind of how run amok this agency is. And then lastly, it seems that we are not being heard by them. It'll be interesting to see what happens after the scoping period, but we have a petition started to you guys to ask for the City Council to put a ballot measure for the November election where every household is assessed a $40 per-year charge to get environmental attorney, top-notch attorney, to fight this. You know, for up to the next 10 years, if need be, it's a relatively small amount of money. We know that Scott Smith and Dan Bain, your firms, have been battling this, but you know, the city's not paying you for that work, and at some point, we worry you both being a million dollars in, that you're going to need to settle. We don't want to settle. We don't want a toll road. We don't want toll lanes on the I-5. We don't want them next to our schools. We don't want to live in Talega next to Vista Hermosa Sports Park. So we're hopeful that residents in the community will sign the petition, and you'll hear our calls and put the assessment for $40 per household and possibly business. I don't know how the business part works, but that would give us over a million dollars a year to keep at this while we actively work on bringing other groups to also be litigating against these proposals. So have a wonderful night, and thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments?
No. Okay. Next is an update on the homeless issue.
I have no updates. Any other updates, Scott?
No, we just wanted to report maybe that the City of Santa Ana had filed an action against the city alleging that San Clemente was, quote, dumping whatever that is, homeless individuals in Santa Ana. There was a strenuous protest filed by the City's Special Counsel to Santa Ana, and that lawsuit has since been withdrawn, so I wanted to note that. Mayor, well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mic'd up on the last item, too. The city's letter to the toll road has been presented and considered by the council. Now, that will go out tomorrow, and maybe we can post that on the city's website for people who want to amen our concerns. They can, they'll be able to do that tomorrow.
I think that'd be great.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. Speakers may address council once during either Oral Communications Part 1 or Part 2. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part 1, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which gives his or her presentation. And I do have some cards.
All right. First up is Ryan Bork, followed by Dwayne Cave, and then Amanda Hodgkin.
So a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to bring a few things back now that we're past after the holidays, but wanted to make the request that a couple items be agendized, and hopefully I can hear a vote on them tonight. One would be raising City Council pay. So pursuant to Government Code Section 36516, for a city population, our size, that could be set at the outset of $500 a month. And it was also in my original proposal, which I'll bring back up again, is that there would be a $500 to $1,000 a month expense reimbursement type stipend for direct out-of-pocket expenses, such as travel, auto expenses, and so forth. And the other item, we seem to broach this a lot, and it's brought up, is taking a look at coming onto our five-year anniversary of having BB&amp;K be the city's council, and to just merely put it on the agenda to have a discussion of potentially doing an RFP to evaluate the contract performance of our services that were being received by BB&amp;K. So not a call to replace them, but to just simply take a look at those services based on the amount of those services and do a kind of an effectiveness study to see, based on what other law firms would say, or based on council's investigation, if we're being serviced properly. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Dwayne Cave, followed by Amanda Hodgkin, and then Pat Patton.
Good evening, Mayor Bain, City Council staff. My name is Dwayne Cave, and I'm the External Relations Manager for San Diego Gas and Electric. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on SDG&E's South Orange County Reliability Enhancement Soccer Project. The soccer project is an infrastructure project that will provide electric reliability to South Orange County. This project was approved by the California Public Utilities Commission on December 15, 2016. At the Capistrano Substation in San Juan Capistrano, we are rebuilding our existing 12 and 138 KV substation that were built in the 1950s. We'll also be constructing a new 230 KV substation on that site, which will bring electricity, reliable electricity, to San Clemente and the region. As you may be aware, for the past couple years, SDG&E and its contractors have been in and around the Capistrano Substation in San Juan Capistrano to accomplish this task. This work will continue for the next couple years. But starting later this month, SDG&E contractors will begin the process of removing our poles, structures, and conduits of one of our 138 KV transmission lines and replace it with a new 230 double-circuit transmission line. This work will take place along our existing transmission corridor from the Capistrano Substation through San Juan Capistrano, next to San Juan Hills High School, and into San Clemente. I'm sure you're aware of the electric transmission corridor that goes by Talega, and there are four sets of lines there. The two sets of lines that are closest to the coast are Southern California Edison's 220 KV lines. The two that are on the inland side are the SDG&E's 138 KV transmission lines. Our project will remove the 138 KV line closest to Edison and replace it with a 230 KV line. This portion of the project is planned to start this month and to be completed in October. We have no planned outages that are associated with this work, and our hope is that construction will be the least disruptive as possible. Those property owners that are within a prescribed distance of our construction zone, as determined by the CPUC, have been notified of our work. On top of that, we have been communicating with landowners, HOAs, San Juan Hills High School concerning this phase of the project. Thank you very much for allowing me to give you a brief update, and if you have any questions or concerns about the project, please reach out directly to me. I'm happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Cave. Amanda Hodgkin, then Pat Patton. We'll have Stan Helm.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much. My name is Amanda Hodgkin, and I am the Resident Services Coordinator for Mendocino at Talega in San Clemente. For those of you that don't know, Mendocino is a 15-year-old affordable apartment community that was developed by Jamburi Housing Corporation, and it serves our low-income families that make between $25,000 and $80,000 annually. Jamburi began with a simple dream in one city, which was to build quality housing that people can afford, and today, that dream is expanding vision across the state of California with corporate strategy that generates jobs, promotes healthy living, and also creates supportive housing. My job as a Resident Services Coordinator is to develop and implement programs for my residents that are families, children, and seniors. And so I'm just here today to introduce myself to you guys and let you know that I want to create a strategic relationship with the city so that I can partner with other organizations to create more programs for the residents at Mendocino. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Pat Patton, followed by Stan Helm, and then Peter Casamatis.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I want to introduce myself. My name is Pat Patton. I am a resident of San Clemente, and I am also the Chief Nursing Officer at UCI Health, as well as a student at the UCI School of Nursing, getting my doctorate this semester. For that quarter that I'm attending, we have to engage ourselves in politics and policy and really engage ourselves in local politics, which has been intriguing. I've been to one City Council meeting and look forward to the future ones to really see how our city works. One thing that interests me and that I'm engaging in is really the use and what you're going to consider to use the abandoned hospital or the hospital that was given up by Memorial Care up on Camino de Australia, and would like, again, to offer up our help or my help as a nurse to advise the City Council on proper use. I really think we do need an emergency department here in San Clemente for that use and what we're going to be doing to serve the communities, the citizens of San Clemente. But also, nurses need to have a strong voice in what that does because nurses play a role. We're the ones that are there 24/7, not the physicians, not the administrators, to do that. So I just ask for that consideration as you look at the RFPs and what you're going to do with the hospital, to have a nurse advise you on those matters. Thank you.
Mr. Patton. Mr. Helm, followed by Peter Casamatis.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Bain. My name's Stan Helm. I've lived in the city for 38 years, and I want to, first of all, thank, tell you how pleased I am with the strength of the council we have now, and thank all five of you for your skill and dedication, and also that you're able to get Mr. Dunick out of retirement, if only for a couple of months. I think he's really the gold standard of city managers. Now, I was out of town for the bulk of January and came back to hear about the stabbing on Cordoba. And I know this has been the subject of much conversation in many venues, but I've got a special interest in that I own the property immediately adjacent to, next door to this property. It was my mother's house. My kids used to spend the night there. We now have a young family that lives there, and the mom dropped out of the workforce to homeschool her kids. I think the first role of government is to protect the citizenry, to provide safety. And having these kids see a stabbing victim bleed out on their front lawn, to see the alleged stabber banging his head in the patrol car, to have the mom piling up furniture in the kid's bedroom window because there are rumors of a gun next door, that's not public safety. This is a horrific, extraordinary event. I know that the city is reviewing the issue of the short-term rental license for this property, and I strongly encourage you, given the extraordinary nature of this, that this license be revoked. There's also the issue of the response of the Sheriff's Department. Calling this a code violation, I think, is clearly a missed call. We've got to figure out what happened that night. Why was this made? Is there inadequate training, inadequate resources? Were the citizens, the residents complaints of, against the Sheriff's Department accurate? Are we really in a society now where a bunch of addled kids have rights that trump those of the residents? We've got to get that, and if that is the case, how do we resolve that? We need some sort of reporter insight as to what the problem is and how we resolve it. There's also the question of the relationship between the city and the Sheriff's Department. I know there've been some problems there. I supported Sheriff Barnes in his election campaign, and I still think he's the right person to be sheriff. I think between the skill set that we have here on the council and also that Sheriff Barnes's skills, that we can hopefully find out what the problem is between the two and get a resolution. In short, three asks of the council. One, that that license be revoked from that house where the stabbing was. Two, that we get some clarity as citizens as to what happened with the Sheriff's Department, how the decisions were made. And thirdly, that the city continue to work with the sheriff to resolve whatever problems exist between the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helm. Last is Peter Casamatis.
Good evening. My name is Peter Casamatis. I am 77 years old and had 23-year, with, second of San Clemente. In February 2017, I had a stroke. I have a serious alopecia, expecting my ability to speak clearly. The most beperting fact from this stroke is the numbness and nuppaplessy in my right leg and foot. It has made my balance very poor, and I do have a tendency to fall. The American Disability Act, ADA, defends since of a service animal is one that is when specifically trained to perform a cask for a person with a disability. The animal is not required to have a certificate. A sevaply is not allowed to ask for documentation for proof that an animal has been certified, trained, or licensed by a service animal. When a person wears a public property, the person cannot be asked the nature or event of the disability. Two questions asked react. Is the animal required because of a disability? And for work or class, has a dackling praying to keep? And I'm sorry, this is bad, but I've written this out here, you guys, if you can see. I have a four-year-old dog that I have taught to amaze me in getting up when I fall. He helps support as I chugle to stand and balances me when I regain my pullings. He is my service dog. There seems to be some discrepancy between the San Clemente City Employees and Orange County Animal Control, which has caused a great deal of confusion for me, and I believe manners as well. I was told by a San Clemente drive card on the beach closest to Linda Lane Park that my dog and I were welcome. Then, two, a week later, by the Orange County Sheriff and Colored, that we're not allowed on any beach in San Clemente. We are being, we feel that we are being discriminated to kinks. I probably, and I wish...
Go ahead and finish.
The animal control officer was wrong in banning me off the beach, even after explaining to him details of what my disability and that my dog was helping me. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
I wish I, you could, when I wrote it, it's a little bit easier to...
Yeah, we got it.
I apologize.
And no, you did great. We read, I read your letter, and we've read your letter at the dais and handed it to staff to look into the issue that you raised.
Yeah, and it's frustrating because, as I said, I love to walk with the dog in the beach. The beach is great for him and for me. And to be thrown off by the ADA, in the beach because it's, ADA says, no, you cannot do that. And that's, but I'm hoping you could hear me.
Well, thank you for raising that, for our attention. We've staff, I see Mr. Dunick is nodding his head. We'll look into that.
Could we have a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Second that. Motion in second. All in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
Close session report, City Attorney.
Sorry, it fell off my desk. We have no reportable action tonight from close session. There was one item that we didn't get to related to property negotiations. There was correspondence from Michael Degani, Property 9 Development, relating to that item, so we'll make sure council has that in hand prior to that item being taken up at your next meeting.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal of item G.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor Bain. I'd like to remove the minutes of January 21, 2020. Should I reference the page?
What item is this?
A Gas-powered leaf blowers, page?
A2?
6A2, yes. Thank you.
And I was going to remove item D. Any others? Okay, so I'll move the balance.
Second.
So motion in a second to move the balance, all in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. So 6A2?
Great, thank you so much. On the minutes regarding the gas-powered leaf blowers, I just wanted to make an edit. I listened to the audio again this morning, but regarding bringing back the regulating gas-powered leaf blowers be agendized for a future meeting. I indicated bring that back to the next meeting or one after that. So it was a future, next meeting or one after that. If we could amend that, that would be great. Revised that. So instead of future meeting, which could be many months from now, it was next meeting or one after that. Thank you. Thank you. I will move the approval of the minutes.
Okay, second that. Okay, talking about Councilmember James, all in favor? Aye. Post, passes 5-0. I just, I have no issue with this. The only issue, I think, is this is a Ninth Amendment, and I think I talked to the city manager already. I don't know that we should be getting into Ninth Amendment territory. I don't know what our policy is, or if we even have one regarding the number of amendments, but hopefully this will be the last of these amendments, and this can go back and go through sort of a normal process. I just wanted to make that sort of comment for the record. So with that, I'll move the item. Unless there's any other comments. Second? Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. Okay, it's item G, Paul Struck.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Hawaiian Surf Club of Santa Nofree. The Hawaiian Surf Club of Santa Nofree, a 501(c) nonprofit organization, was founded by a group of Hawaiians who had moved from Hawaii to California. They found that they missed their culture that they left behind. They formed a group in 1980, 1990, I'm sorry, called the Hawaiian Surf Club of Santa Nofree. The purpose of the club, then and now, was to include Californians in the traditions of surfing, Hawaiian culture, including music and sharing traditional food, and to share the spirit of aloha. The 30th Annual Polynesian Festival will be held in May, on May 23rd, 2020 Memorial Weekend. The festival goes from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The entertainment to be enjoyed is free of charge to the public. There will be music provided by Hawaiians from the club and community groups that came, that come every year to participate, traditional Polynesian dancing, provided by dancers that range from the very young to the very old, and a variety of vendors that represent Pacific Highlanders, art, clothing, and crafts. We also serve a delicious plate lunch of teriyaki chicken, rice salad, and cookie for dessert. Many people sit up chairs and blankets on the grass at the San Clemente Community Center and spend the day with us. We also recognize veterans throughout the day, Memorial Day, and visitors enjoy the woodies that line up along the Del Mar Avenue. The Hawaiian Surf Club of Santa Nofree brings the community of San Clemente together to celebrate the Hawaiian culture through their annual Polynesian Festival. For the above-mentioned reasons, we are requesting a one-time fee waiver not to exceed $643 for the permit.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I got a question for staff. Samantha. How are you? How long has the Hawaiian Surf Club been hosting the Polynesian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Samantha Wiley, Recreation Manager. This is the 30th year for the Polynesian Festival. They've been a longtime participant at the community center, and they've paid their fees every year, and we have told them that they are certainly ripe for a partnership, so we're happy to partner with them moving forward on this.
Has it been the Hawaiian Surf Club the whole time?
It has been, yes. And they have scaled their event back significantly over the years. They did, they used to do a big luau in the evening, which the event cost much higher at that point. They are scaling back, though, as they've mentioned.
So I'm going to make the motion that we approve this this evening, and when it comes back next year, offer a five-year contract, like something similar to what we did with the G-Boys, so. Okay, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
Samantha, that was clear. Next year, five years?
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is to consider a city-initiated proposal to amend portions of the zoning ordinance to update permitting requirements for small wireless telecommunications facilities.
Katie? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bain, and members of the city council. Katie Crockett, Associate Planner. Before you this evening is an ordinance to amend the zoning code and to adopt design and development standards for small cells in the city of San Clemente. By way of background, this ordinance came about because of new rules adopted by the FCC related to how cities process applications for small cells. These rules include new shorter shot clocks, 60 days or 90 days, depending on the structure. Shot clocks are counted from the day the application is submitted. Shot clocks also include time for appeals. Therefore, the appeal period and time for appeal must be accounted for, meaning that staff cannot utilize the full shot clock time to review and prepare initial recommendations. Established maximum fees are also a part of the rule, and the FCC also requires that any design or aesthetic requirements imposed by cities must meet the following four tests. The standards must be reasonable, objective, no more burdensome than those applied to other similar types of infrastructure deployments, and published in advance of the application being submitted. Currently, in the city of San Clemente, like for larger, traditional larger sites, small cells would require either a CUP or a city antenna permit. Both of these processes require designer view subcommittee review and a noticed public hearing. Cell sites are permitted in all zones, and most development and design standards are determined through the discretionary process, meaning they are neither objective nor published in advance. This process started in May, when the city council voted to initiate the zoning amendment. Throughout the process, the zoning amendment has been agendized on a number of meetings of the city council, designer view subcommittee, and planning commission. To keep interested parties apprised of the status of the zoning amendment, the city created a small cell webpage and maintains an email notification list used to notify interested parties about the process. Staff has received public comment throughout the process. Written comments received by staff were compiled and provided to the council, except for those which were emailed to you or provided on the dais after the packet was published. Staff believes the draft before you today balances the objectives of the city in regulating time, place, and manner of these installations, as well as establishes both meaningful and reasonable objective design criteria that will promote consistency with the character of our city and aesthetic consistency from installation to installation. Much discussion and public comment has been directed at the safety of small cell installations as it relates to exposures to radio frequency emitted by small cells and by cell sites in general. The FCC has set a maximum permissible exposure level and determined that these levels of exposure are safe. These levels are established in FCC Office of Engineering and Technology Bulletin 65, adopted in 1996. The FCC recently evaluated the possibility of updating or modifying these established levels of RF exposure, but determined that the existing limits are sufficient. Their reasoning for this determination is outlined in the recent FCC Opinion and Order 19-126, adopted on November 27, 2019. The public can debate the veracity of the FCC's claims and safety of their established exposure levels, but the city is prohibiting, prohibited from establishing any other permissible levels of exposure other than those established by the FCC, nor can the city base citing or design requirements on concerns related to RF exposure levels. It's simply not an issue of local control and should be debated with the FCC at the federal level. The city can and does require RF emissions information prior to approving individual sites and during a required post-installation test once a site is constructed. The goal of the ordinance is to ensure safety by requiring proper permitting reviews and compliance with set radio frequency exposure standards, to protect aesthetics by creating reasonable objective design criteria, which also helps with the next goal of minimizing discretion involved, to facilitate compliance with restrictive shot clocks and fee limitations imposed on the city. There are several key elements of the ordinance. The process, it would establish a new wireless permit for all small cell applications. Determinations would be made administratively by the city planner. While there is no public hearing, due to feedback from the public noticing has been included. Appeals would also be administrative, determinations being made by the community development director. Appeals must be filed within three business days of the initial decision. The design and development standards document contains general design criteria, as well as specific design criteria for certain types of installations, such as streetlights or utility poles. There are a variety of locational criteria. Key criteria include minimum separations of 100 feet to residential and mixed-use property lines, 500 feet to school property lines, and 300 feet from cell site to cell site. They are also not permitted within very high fire hazard severity zones. Exceptions to any of the criteria can be requested if the applicant shows that strict adherence to the standards would inhibit their provision of a particular personal wireless service or otherwise violate state or federal law. As drafted, staff believes the standards set forth are reasonable controls of time, place, and manner of installation of small cell facilities. Standards such as separation distances are reasonable in that they leave large available areas where deployment of small cells are permitted, particularly along many major arterials and in proximity to business centers. In proximity to business centers, residential development and recreational activities. In those instances where a carrier would need to locate in a prohibited location, which based upon the areas available for small cell deployment, should not represent a majority of cases, the exception request is available to applicants. The design criteria are reasonable and that they protect aesthetics in ways that in most instances should be technically feasible. This assertion is based upon the fact that carrier feedback has been incorporated with regard to the height and size of a variety of typical small cell installations, and that steffing techniques are based upon current feasible best practices. This amendment was drafted with the goals of protecting aesthetics and maintaining safety while providing objective standards and a streamlined review to facilitate compliance with FCC mandated shot clocks and fee limitations. Staff endeavored to respond to and incorporate feedback received from the public and the wireless industry, as well as planning commissioners, to the extent that the feedback could be incorporated without either being too permissive to the detriment of aesthetics, or too prohibitive to run afoul of the Public Utilities Commission or FCC regulations. The result is the draft before you this evening. Staff, along with the planning commission, recommends that tonight the city council introduce the ordinance as drafted and adopt the resolution adopting the design and development standards for small cells. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions of staff? Katie, thank you very much for the presentation. And I'll open the public hearing, and then I'm going to call up three speakers at a time, if you could line up behind the podium. First is going to be Bill Crutenger, followed by Tony Hayes, and then I think it's Ed Bartelt?
Good evening, Mayor Bain, council, staff, and thank you for preparing that. Is this the, for me? I have a presentation of some things that I think should be kept in mind over the course of this hearing. I was in attendance at the planning commission, and I kind of followed this issue very closely. You'll probably hear concerns about property values. They're not borne out in the data. It just doesn't hold up. So I'm going to click through there, because there's a lot. You'll hear the claims that standards are outdated, and that they don't take biological effects into consideration, and that they don't consider children or other vulnerable people's safety. Well, the FCC has declined to update their standards. The industry, oh yeah, I'm so sorry, thank you. The industry has taken care of that. The IEE, that's the International Engineers Organization, their standards were updated just last year, and those are the standards that the FCC standards are based on. It includes research on biological effects. There's over 1,500 entries in their bibliography, many of them involving those sorts of things. And there are specifically studies on the effects of RF on children, pregnant women, and other vulnerable populations. I have some just snippets of that standard here. I'm happy to review it with anyone. There's at least 1,500 pieces, biological effects right there, general public includes people with impairments, children, pregnant women. It's all covered. People are worried about 5G, which is interesting, because none of these facilities that are new to the city are 5G, but they're, it doesn't make a lot of sense to worry about it. It's an industry term. It was put out in 2017, and it's basically just a recycling, I mean, there's no such thing as a new frequency, right? The power levels are low, and the frequencies have been studied for decades. It just wasn't called 5G, because it wasn't a thing yet. None of it's new, and it's all been tested. Some people will say it's a weapon. It's definitely not. People like to cite the active denial system, that piece of equipment operates at 100 kilowatts compared to 20 watts that the new small cells in our city will operate at. That is a bigger difference than that between a school water fountain and a industrial water jet cutter. I'm sure we can all visualize the difference. Mayor concerned about pulse radiation and how studies don't consider that. Cellular communications use frequency modulation, so power levels are actually pretty constant. There's a bunch of the standards right there. A lot of people, you know, it's not unusual for people to believe things that aren't realistic. They just shouldn't be guiding policy.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I did get a chance to look at this earlier. I think everybody else did as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tony Hayes. Mayor Bain, members of the city council. There are three questions that need to be answered with respect to 5G in particular, and the earlier speakers have actually been talking more about 4G, but this is specifically to 5G. At the city-sponsored workshop on November 20th, Mike Pettis described the studies have been performed over the past 50 years and have just been reinforced by the previous speaker, that 5G frequencies are well outside the range of ionizing frequencies that can cause cell damage, and the FCC and the IAAA safety guidelines limit irradiance in micro microwatts per square centimeter less than sunlight by a factor of about 170. There's a huge difference even between sunlight and what we're getting here. Second question is, are they aesthetic? Well, they're not particularly aesthetic, but there are many things around us that are not particularly aesthetic, such as traffic lights, lamp standards, street signs, but we accept them because they are beneficial to us. And 5G cells, or these small cells here, they're a relatively minor issue compared with things like traffic signals. But the more important question is, why do we need 5G? Compared with 4G, 5G has about Compared with 4G, 5G has about 250 times the capacity in terms of devices per square kilometer around that cell. It has 100 times the data transmission rate, and about one-fifth the latency, that is the delay between sending a signal and being received at the other end. All these things are necessary to enable universal autonomous vehicles, and these are going to be on the streets anywhere within about 10 years. With 5G, vehicles connect through small cells to artificial intelligence in the cloud, and the vehicles connect with each other under a special 5G protocol. Similar benefits can be achieved on surface streets. There was extra benefit if the traffic signals are also linked to vehicles, so you get a seamless flow of platooning vehicles intersecting but almost never having to stop at the traffic signals. These things are going to happen. There's going to be an enormous increase in traffic capacity on both surface streets and on freeways, and the outcome of this is, you don't need a Route 241 extension. Also, you don't need to widen I-5 because of the huge increase in traffic capacity. So San Clemente could be one of the greatest beneficiaries of 5G. The city should be doing the most to encourage 5G installation, so as to permit autonomous vehicle operations, and thus prevent construction of the 241 extension, or widening the I-5. So I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Bartheld?
Yes, hello.
Followed by Anne Marie Hines, and then Kristen Fuller.
Hi, my name's Ed Von Bartheld. I am a resident of San Clemente. I'm here on behalf of my son, who lives on Costero Street, which is very close to where a proposed small cell tower will be installed. My son also has two sons, and their bedroom, in addition to the bedrooms of perhaps 15 other kids in that neighborhood, will be within 60 to 100 feet of these proposed towers. My question is actually to this lady here. She's the lady that knows all about the installation, and my question is, if these do get installed, are they initially going to be 4G?
Well, we'll have her --
They will be 4G?
If you could just direct your comments to the council, we'll have her answer those at a later time.
Okay. I'd like to know if they're going to be 4G going in. I imagine that's the current technology, so they'll be 4G. But will AT&amp;T need approval from anybody to switch them over to 5G, which has the RF signal that Brussels won't have, and some major cities won't have because of the potentiality for damage to cellular structure and things of that nature? That's what I want to know, is, are they able to switch them to 5G like that with no permission from anybody at our level? And we just live with the consequences for this? Or do we have some say-so? I don't know that we need 5G. I mean, all that stuff up there works fine. Netflix works fine, cell phones work fine, and I understand what the other man was saying about the cars, that's the bigger picture. But I'm concerned about the health and betterment of my grandchildren and my son. So, that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get those questions answered. Anne Marie Hines, followed by Kristen Fuller, and then Jeff Perkins.
I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. One is enough enough. Too much food can kill you. Too much wine can kill you. Too much RF-EMF microwave radiation can kill you. Where should San Clemente draw the line? Daphna Tackover of New York City recently addressed the Beverly Hills City Council. She stated, quote, "The non-thermal harm is scientifically proven, including by studies of our own government. Most recently, on 11/1/18, the final report of the Federal Government National Toxicology Program, NTP, the government expert agency on toxins, was published. The $30 million, 19-year study found clear evidence that this radiation causes cancer and breaks DNA." According to Arthur Firstenberg, 5G is different than 4G. Instead of being blanketed with RF-EMF, 5G will transmit phased arrays. 5G will send out a million powerful concentrated beams whizzing by us at all times. If you walk between someone's phone and their base station, both beams will go right through your body. The most vulnerable will be the children of this city. This technology is not new. It has been around 70 years. It has been used by the military as a weapon and for crowd control. Technology like 5G should not be available for public use, and I would like San Clemente to be a 5G sanctuary city. Also, I wanted to point out that when 5G is under maximum use, it will be slow. So only when people are sleeping at night will you get the lightning speed of 5G. The Planning Commission passed the Small Cell Ordinance on 12/18/19. I commend them that small cells are restricted from residential areas, but have a huge concern for the properties along the public rights of way, along Pico, Australia, Hermosa, El Comino Real, and La Pata. 100 feet is not far enough, even if it's located on the opposite side of the street. 300 feet from pole to pole is not enough space. Lacuna Canyon is ruined by cell towers, and then they're all at nearly eye level. From Lot 10 into the canyon, there were 10 cell sites at eye level, and it was absolutely disgusting. Okay, I've been there twice since then. I have not heard songbirds, and there were dead bees littering the sidewalk with crickets. My 13-year-old son witnessed it with me, and it's very, very sad. There's no explanation for it, other than RF-EMF radiation. Also, I'm out of time, but this map, I really like the last page because the maximum distance is 1,000 feet.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to give this to anybody who is interested.
Thank you very much. Kristen Fuller, followed by Jeff Perkins, and then Vanessa Barr.
Mayor Bain and fellow City Council members, my name is Kristen Fuller, and I've been a San Clemente resident since 2002 for 18 years. As we all know, it is an important part of the democratic process to be able to present all sides of a matter, especially important ones like the Small Cell Ordinance that will affect thousands of city residents. My involvement and interest in cell tower issue began several years ago, when I happened to see a public notice posted obscurely next to the sidewalk for a proposed macro cell tower on Costero Risco in Forster Ranch, near where I live. At the time, I attended a City Council meeting regarding that tower, only to find that the decision to put the macro tower very close to nearby homes was seemingly already decided upon before the council meeting. I was very discouraged by the lack of thorough consideration by the City Council then, as it quickly voted to approve that tower against the statements and appeals by nearby neighbors and other concerned citizens. An interesting side note is that one of the public speakers that night in favor of that tower is now on the City Planning Commission. Also, the mayor at the time of that vote was Tim Brown, who has worked in the telecom industry and who I believe currently works for Crown Castle, one of the biggest cellular telecommunications companies in the U.S. I would like to believe that the city isn't giving preferential treatment to the telecom companies due to insider contacts. Fast forward to today, when we now have five already approved small cell sites surrounding my reserved neighborhood, and in the nearby ranch of San Clemente Business Park, with many more potential sites to be proposed, and I can't help but feel a sense of Groundhog Day. The City Planning Commission, city employees, and elected City Council members have a duty to represent and look out for its citizens, and yet, only a core group of us are working hard with no monetary incentive to protect our families, neighbors, and fellow citizens. The reason there are not crowds of citizens here protesting these small cells like our group is that it isn't yet in their backyards. And most of them have no idea what's going on, because in part, it's such a new technology, and 5G is sold in Super Bowl ads as a good thing that even grandma wants. It's like the toad in the pot that doesn't know it's slowly boiling to death. Many of our fellow citizens are not yet aware about the health and safety dangers, let alone the property value and aesthetic impact of small cell site technology. Our -- trying to jump ahead. Specifically in regards to Small Cell Ordinance, please see the attached list of recommendations that we would like for the ordinance, including -- well, I'll let you read through them, but please note that our group, Safe Cell Sites for SD, is not against better cell reception where it is absolutely necessary. We are for safe and thorough vetting of appropriate areas and conditions on implementing the needed sites. While we appreciate the hard work and efforts of all those involved in this issue, we believe it is worth the extra time and consideration in the long run for the benefit and welfare of the residents of this city.
Great. Thank you very much. Next is Jeff Perkins, followed by Vanessa Barr, and then Kristi Newhausen.
Robert. Thank you. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. Imagine I give you two beakers, one in each hand. Each beaker contains two drops of poison per second. Now drink one, which one would you choose? Obviously, there's not enough information. Now, let me say that the left hand would be for 10 seconds, and the right hand would be for 24 hours. Obviously, you would choose the left hand. The left hand in this scenario is a macro tower, assuming it's at a safe distance from residences. The right hand in this scenario is a small cell that is being planned to be within 100 feet of residences. Distance is our friend. It is self-evident to each of us that total exposure over time is what really matters. In the case of sun exposure, 30 minutes is a pleasant experience, where you might get a little tan and some vitamin D. Several hours, and I'm going to be very red and burned. Same thing happens when we cook a potato in a microwave oven. You can cook it at 100% power for five minutes, and you can also cook it at 50% power for 10 minutes. Doesn't help to know just the instantaneous measurement of power density. That is meaningless. You need to know the total power delivered over time, and if this amount of work is sufficient to achieve the effect. Federal RF microwave radiation exposure guidelines have no concept of total power delivered over time. Sounds like the guideline deal with time, a nominal 30-minute period for public exposure, and a nominal six-minute period for occupational exposure, but it is merely a convention used to ease the measurement process. The FCC guideline is absurd and obsolete. A rate of exposure tells us nothing without the context of time. Time matters. What can cities do? We understand that you're not allowed to currently consider health and safety. Hopefully, that'll be changing in this year with all of the major court cases that are being taken against the FCC. For the time being, let's consider what cities can regulate: operations. The TCA of 1996 does not preempt operations. In the ultimate version of the TCA, the words "operate" and "operations" were removed, expressing congressional intent. Cities must regulate three operational factors: how high off the ground is the antenna, how many feet away the tower is, and effective radiated power. Limit the power that these towers are emitting. Ask the applicants, how far down the street do they need the signal to go? Calculate the ERP needed. Give the poles enough power to make a phone call, since that is all the city is obligated to provide. The wireless industry does not have preemption to maximize their profits. They only have preemption for a nationwide telecommunications network comprised of Title II regulated communications, which are only voice frequencies, not data frequencies.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Appreciate it. Vanessa Barr, followed by Kristi Newhausen, and then Courtney Morrow.
Actually, if you -- I'm going to continue from where he left off, if you could.
I'm sorry, she's continuing the end of the --
If you could just put that back up, please. Keep going. Thank you. One more, please. Thank you. So, we're asking that you just consider and understand the risk and transfer of liability, the impact of affixing private technology to public structures. The city basically now becomes a landlord and legally vulnerable to health and safety claims, and we know that these things, these health and safety claims, will happen, especially the more of these small sites that come, that start appearing around our city. A lot of people right now have no idea that these are in the works, and as soon as they start popping up, especially by homes, it's going to become, it's opening up a huge can of worms. Telecom carriers are unable to get coverage from third-party insurers for injury from RF-EMR exposure claims. There's just a lot of things that can, could potentially get really messy. The -- the next slide. February 2015, Lloyds of London, one of the largest insurers in the world, finally made its position absolutely clear with regards to exposure to non-ionizing radiation. Lloyds of London insurance won't cover smartphones, Wi-Fi, smart meters, cellphone towers by excluding all wireless radiation hazards. Quote, "directly or indirectly arising out of resulting from or contributed to by electromagnetic fields, electromagnetic radiation, electromagnetism, radio waves, or noise." The policyholder made an understandable inquiry, seeking more clarification about the exclusion language. CFC underwriting sent the following, quote, "The electromagnetic field exclusion is a general insurance exclusion and is applied across the market as standard. The purpose of the exclusion is to exclude cover for illnesses caused by continuous long-term non-ionizing radiation exposure, for example, through exposures from mobile phones and infrastructure transreceivers." So, I mean, these cell towers, the term "small cells" is very misleading. Again, people have no idea that these are even happening unless you've been, if one was going to be near your house and you happened to get a letter. And when these start going up, it's just, it's going to open up a huge can of worms, and once ordinance passes, I don't believe we'll be able to go back and make changes. And 100 feet is okay, but we definitely need at least 500 feet from homes, if not more, as a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Newhausen, followed by Courtney Morrow, and then Laura Fisher.
I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. We, the residents of San Clemente, are asking that you grant a greater distance than 100 feet from the nearest residential property line to the closest small cell, not only because of the radical negative health effects from living in such close proximity to a cell tower, but also because of the aesthetically displeasing view of these small cells that has been discussed to be placed every 300 feet pole to pole. In my first slide, I used the location of the proposed cell site that AT&amp;T would like to use on Kai Del Cerro in Rancho San Clemente. To give you a visual idea of how close 100-foot distance is, here is the location of the proposed site and the home that is only 100 feet away, about the length of a basketball court. We should not let this become the norm in our beautiful city. Slide two. This is just one of the streets in San Clemente that will be affected. Here are the sites just a quarter mile down the street from Kai Del Cerro that AT&amp;T proposed last year. Surely, you can see, they will just want to complete the circle of small cells around our community. This is a small example of what San Clemente may look like with these small cells 300 feet pole to pole and only 100 feet from homes. Please keep in mind, these towers will run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They have no business in close proximity to homes. Next slide, please. Professional RF engineer Lee Afferbach, who attended our meeting last November, stated, "The radios that the macro towers are using are the same exact radios being used in the 4G and 5G equipment." As you can see in this slide, you have an enormous-sized macro tower to your left, and that very same equipment inside that macro tower that will be going in a 4G or 5G cell node to your right. Would one feel safe with a macro tower sitting only 100 feet from their home? Would one feel safe with a macro tower sitting only 100 feet from their home? Of course not. Would one feel safer with a six-foot small cell node nicely sitting on top of a light pole? The appearance of a small cell is obviously very misleading and deceiving." Here is an, next slide, please. "Here is an aerial view of St. Clemente on the top and Encinitas on the bottom. The topography, as you can see, is extremely similar. Both are cities along the ocean with quiff dwellings and many hills. Encinitas currently has an ordinance of 500 feet from homes and schools and a 1,000-foot separation from pole-to-pole. Surely, we can do the same, if not better. The removal of public hearing for future applications of small cells is incomprehensible. The residents of St. Clemente did not elect staff for the appeal process. We elected the city council officials to make decisions who, I might add, reside in our city. This is taking away the residents' right to be heard by our elected council members. Also, we should have a third-party independent RF engineer hired by St. Clemente and not by telecom to test the RF annually to ensure it's giving out what deems safe and acceptable. We elected you so that, when the time came, you would make the right decision in order to protect the people of St. Clemente. I pray you do so. Thank you."
Thank you. Courtney Morrow, followed by Laura Fisher, and then Michael Faraher.
Can I also submit some materials on the record for, these are comments from an expert attorney on the deployment of these small cells, and this is a pretty extensive list of known fires caused by cell towers. We attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within our personal knowledge. These are the proposed changes that we really want to focus in on, in this presentation. We'd like tiered preferred locations and expansion of the alternative site search radius to 1,500 feet, 500-foot residential setbacks, 1,000-foot separation between wireless telecommunication facilities, application requirement for proof of NEPA review, compliance. Do not remove public hearings from appeals, and appeal fees should be reduced for the public. Preferred locations should be tiered so that facilities are placed in the least bad to best location, most preferred, I'm sorry, best, most preferred to least, to ensure that the applicants would always have to demonstrate, even if not seeking an exception, that the location is most preferred within a given distance, and that no more preferred location is feasible on an existing or replacement support structure within that radius. Encinitas' ordinance is a good example of this. That radius should be expanded to consider all alternative sites within 1,500 feet. The expanded search radius puts the power back in the hands of the city and allows them to have more of a choice to determine least intrusive location within a 1,500-foot radius. 300 feet limits the alternative support structures available for consideration. Residential setbacks do not, residents do not want to see these ugly visual nuisances outside our front doors and windows. The CEO of Verizon and a lead engineer are both on record saying and showing on video that small cells can propagate a signal over 2,000 feet, so they do not need to be 100 feet from our homes. The minimum distance from homes should be no less than 500 feet. Separation distances, having these every 300 feet on light poles would be a visual nuisance, and aesthetically, that would look bad. Tower designs will not be the same across carriers. That's something that hasn't really been talked about. This, again, will create an even greater visual inconsistencies that will incommode the public's quiet enjoyment of our streets. Lastly, increasing the distances between cell towers will mitigate the visual clutter of these towers. This is a list of some cities, some examples, and it's pretty glaring that we're nowhere near these. Other cities are doing it, and we, so should we. NEPA, I'm sorry. The Second Circuit DC Court of Appeals ruled that these small cell towers are not exempt from NEPA, and each WTF application requires NEPA review. As a result, every tower and every application requires proof of this applicant's compliance with the FCC for a NEPA review. This needs to be a requirement in our application checklist. Without it, all applications should be deemed incomplete. Requirements must be retroactively applied to all pending applications. How is the city council supposed to vote on the ordinance zoning amendment for wire, wireless telecommunication, telecommunications without understanding the application requirements for these new permits?
Thank you. Next is Laura Fisher.
My name is Laura Fisher, and I'm going to continue the presentation on NEPA. Please add the following language to your application checklist. Specifically, if exempt, please state what the basis is for exemption and provide proof, including supporting documents that establish that this installation meets such an exemption. Next, we oppose staff's recommendation to remove public hearings from the appeals process, specifically only to these wireless permits. Many people spoke out and wrote emails contesting this change. However, staff is claiming that there is not enough time within the presumed shot-clock timeframes outlined by the FCC order. However, other cities are maintaining an appeals process that goes to public hearing. How are they making it work, but we can't? As it stands, an application will continue into the city planner who is hired for their wireless experience. This planner will be the sole decider in approving or denying these applications. If appealed, the community development director would make a decision with no public hearing and no elected officials involved. These applications aren't even seen by the planning commission. Unfortunately, we already know where the city planner stands on these sites, when they're, when they stood up at the planning commission meeting in August and defended AT&amp;T's Vitorcas' site as the best and only option. A cell tower where the antenna would have been in direct horizontal alignment 30 feet from homes higher up on a slope and 50 feet away from a kindergarten playground at Marblehead School. Now, you expect the public to trust this same judgment call and have confidence in this process? The public requests lowering the fees for appeals. This places an unfair burden on residents. The staff recommendation was not to incorporate this, saying these appeals fees are consistent across all planning applications. We disagree with this. We should, why should residents pay $500 to appeal with no public hearing while a large private company only pays $1,200 to submit the application and would benefit from no public hearing? City council, we urge you to do better than this. We have expressed no concern or any other non-substantive matter, but solely matters of fact and law. We accept your oath of office. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Faraher, followed by Melanie Priest, and then Gail Trask.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First and foremost, I'd just like to recognize the tremendous effort staff has undertaken to get to this point. I know I participated in each of the planning commission workshops, and we were able to participate outside when we had a question-and-answer session with the other carriers available for comment. I was slightly underwhelmed with the, with the inquiries that we received, as we only had one person to talk to, but notwithstanding that, I, I do want to just point out to hear that currently, the average home in America has 13 connected devices, 13 mobile devices. The, the number of 911 calls that currently come from a wireless device exceeds 80%, and over 50% of households are now wireless-only, they have no landline. So while I often hear of wireless infrastructure as a novelty, this is critical infrastructure. We are dependent on it, and I understand that you're hearing from a very vocal minority here today, but statistically speaking, the overwhelming majority of your residents are the silent minority. We represent our Verizon customers. Without this critical infrastructure, we often hear, well, my cellphone service is fine. That may be the case today, but without the addition of these, the buttressing of the existing network, there will be a degradation of service. There will be a diminishment of the current levels of service, and certainly no addition of new technologies in the future. We've worked closely with staff. We intend to be a committed partner in cooperative, cooperation to cite these responsibly. Our outside counsel did submit a letter on our behalf to highlight some of the shortcomings that we believe, and I recognize that there are some considerable both state and federal constraints on this body in making this decision. But I would encourage this body to consider a slightly lower setback requirement, as it certainly would lend itself to be, to treating wireless infrastructure akin to other similar infrastructure in the right of way, as well as preserving the mandate of CPUC 7901, which permits telephone, telephone, telecom carriers to deploy in any right-of-way. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is Melanie Priest, followed by Gail Trask, and then, I think it's Matthew, is it, Heffner?
Hi, my name's Melanie Priest. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. Safe cell sites for SC sent an email on February 3, 2020, to city council of Lee Afribac, the expert RF engineer that our city hired for the public forum, stating on the record that all the small cell sites that are currently being proposed in the many cities that he and his company have reviewed are, in fact, 4G sites. They are using the exact same radios and technologies as it was used on macro towers. So we are now being faced with the reality that this same technology is going to be used within 100 feet of our homes and 500 feet from our schools. The city council has also provided an additional email that same day outlining the horrific reality of an apartment complex in Sebastopol, California, where the Crown Castle has a micro cell tower 250 to 500 feet away, and that has resulted in five deaths and 13 serious illnesses and injuries. Like our own expert, that city hired Lee Afribac on 11/19/19 at our public forum, and what the Sebastopol, California article highlighted is the importance of distance. Distance is our friend, Lee Afribac. Industry will claim that these small wireless telecommunications facilities will not be as high-powered, but please explain to me how the city is going to regulate this and make sure that this is true. Based on the Telecommunications Act of 1996, the FCC does not preempt the operations of these cell towers, and it would behoove the city to regulate the effective radiated power that these towers emit. The amount of energy consumption that these towers will require, let alone the hundreds that will likely be applied for within our town, is not only inefficient, but for a town who cares about our environment, these are not green. The city should be asking providers for each site application. How far down the street do you need to go, i.e., signal to propagate? Once you know this, it's a simple calculation for the effective radiated power. ERP, when it first exists, the antenna, sorry, exits the antenna, and that is all the city is obligated to provide. ERP is a much easier thing to measure than RF. In all reality, it is the city's best interest to push back where we can, because the technology is only going to get smaller, better, and less ugly. We approve these too soon, and we are going to be left with a bunch of junk on our light poles that will be near impossible to get rid of. The real question you have to ask yourself as an elected official who took an oath to office to protect our residents and towns is, do you want these all over our city? If the answer is no, then the city needs to understand that the liability and the risk associated with this rollout, private technology affixed to the public structures, the city is the landlord in this scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Trask, followed by Matthew Heffner, and then Anna and Jane Fisher.
Hi, my name is Gail Trask. I'm a nurse practitioner. I also want to point out to the Verizon guy that you said a lot of people don't have traditional landlines. You guys don't offer that. AT&amp;T offers that, but it took a lot of time and energy for my husband and I to get a traditional landline. Here's a simplified version of how data-carrying radio frequency radiation, which includes microwave radiation, affects all of us. Because radiation from wireless telecommunications facilities is foreign to life by way of its pulse modulation, this radiation creates chaos in our bodies. If you're healthy, you may not notice immediate or attributable effects, but the radiation is adversely affecting you, nonetheless interfering with whole-body central nervous system function, affecting things such as fertility, like low sperm quality and quantity, and impairing cells from communicating with the extracellular matrix and causing inappropriate cell division, which causes cancer. Constant exposure slowly chips away at your body's defenses. The scientific literature has been out there for decades. These are not conspiracy theories, as someone said. There are thousands of studies out there that indicate that radio frequency radiation is harmful, no matter what the telecom industry says. Exposure to radio frequency radiation is hazardous, particularly when modulated and when its wavelengths are in the very dimensions of our brain and other key organs, producing maximal absorption and consequences to follow. In the face of all this evidence, why do a small portion, proportion of studies show no effects? Of course, studies can and often are designed to fail, but in a good study, it's because the healthier the cell, the higher the voltage it can maintain, the more intact its cell wall, and the less injured from other environmental hazards. This is why a cell or a whole body may initially absorb RFR without acute adverse effects. Damage is still being done, but it takes longer to dismantle a house with a good structure than one that has suffered with years of poor maintenance or prior assaults. In our central nervous system, insulated cords provide protection and efficiency for our internal electrical processing, and this model works far better for electronics, too. However, spraying random electromagnetism anywhere and everywhere is not only ineffective, it's harmful. We shouldn't pay for faster download speeds with our health. 5G is not good engineering. It's not even as fast or reliable or secure or energy-efficient, and nor as capable as fiber optic cables, and it's a huge energy waster. What we don't see can hurt us. Public officials, I hope you use whatever means you can possible to put the brakes on these wireless telecommunications facilities. I think that's it. I, that's it? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Heffner, followed by Anna and Jane Fisher.
Hello, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I appreciate being able to come back. I was here about three and a half months ago, and I had a nice PowerPoint presentation I hope you all remember, but I saved that for, and not did that again tonight. I think you've received enough information. I know that I've been out and seen Kathy Ward out amongst our, our neighborhood at the reserve, and a lot of you have looked a lot into this, and I know Chris Hamm was against the appeal that night, along with Mrs. Ferguson. We appreciate that. At the time, we'd asked you to kind of put that to bed and, you know, try to move that tower, but it looks like we're, we're still dealing with that location, as well as just others across the city. And so tonight, I'm just here to be one of those minorities that's here to say, I'm a father of five, and we matter, and we live in a nation that allows us to get a public comment, and that we have city council members who live in the city to listen to their neighbors and to make judgment on behalf of everyone, and we trust you with that, and we're grateful for you taking the consideration of everything that's been presented in your decision-making as we roll forward. As we do so, I encourage you to remember that you're in control. You're in control of the decisions in our city, and although we might have to negotiate and maybe dance with the devil a little bit, let's remember that we can lead in that dance, and that it's going to take a little bit of bravery to tell the suits on the fourth row, you know, not here and not now, and this is why. We have a great city attorney who can do wonders, and they'll move on when we say no, and they'll find other ways because they have a lot of funding behind them to be able to find other ways to provide services. They're not going to allow the services to diminish. They have lots of people being paid to be able to find ways to ensure that their businesses run forward and continue. But we want to do it in a way that still honors the residents and doesn't put our, our children at risk. It's not over highly populated neighborhoods where lots of children are playing and over schools. There have been great cities that have gone before us here, who have, you know, put a little more teeth into their ordinances, like the 1,000 feet and the 1,500 feet, and I urge this council to take a look at that. Have a little more bravery in our decision-making in this ordinance, and let's put a little more teeth into it, and, and those, and those people that are saying we can't, you know, tell them that we can, and do a little bit more. I know that that night that we were here, we honored a city council member that sat in those seats, that kind of took. in those seats that kind of took down the power plant, and you honored her for her bravery. And I encourage all of you to do the same, that we can honor you in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna and Jane Fisher.
Hi, I'm Anna Fisher, and I'm 13 years old.
And I'm her sister Jane.
We live 30 feet away from the proposed cell site on Veracruz. The decision you make tonight will impact our future and yours, so please make a good one, and don't put cell towers next to our homes.
I don't want our small beach town to turn into the next LA.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Do we have any more cards? Is it Deanna Jones? Deanna Jones? And then Reed Poole? If I mispronounced your name, I apologize.
No, you said right. I'm shocked. You must not live next to a cell tower. Okay. This is my husband Reed. So we are parents to three small kids, three under three, and so we just kind of wanted to-
If you're able to step or talk in the microphone, then folks can hear you.
Yes, hi. Deanna Jones, and this is my husband Reed Poole, and we just wanted to come and give our thoughts on the cell tower. We're a family with three small children, three under three, and so we feel very passionate about this subject. My ploy is, if this were in your backyard, what would you want? Would you want to live next to it? So I don't think you can vote for it if you wouldn't want it for your family.
And then I just briefly wanted to talk about the setback. And I guess, as far as my understanding, currently it exists, it's going to be a 500-foot setback from schools versus a 100-foot setback from residential areas. And I think it's important to probably look at having that setback be the exact same. Make it the exact same between all the residents, because effectively what you're doing by having different setbacks is you're implying that there's something bad about these cell towers. You're saying, I want it 500 feet away from schools and children, but the problem is that houses that are within then 100 foot of a school immediately have their property values devalued, immediately, because they will basically limit the amount of buyers that will come to those homes. Potential buyers who have children will say, well, I don't want to live within that close to that cell tower. They don't put it that close to schools, why would I want to live next to it? So you're immediately going to devalue all those homes that are right next to it. So I think it's vitally important, whether you believe that there's harm from these cell towers or not, that the setback be the exact same. And then basically make the community decide what that setback should that be. Should it be 500 feet from every school, from every house? Should it be 50 feet from every school, from every house? Therefore, it's exactly fair to every single resident in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, no more cards, so close the public hearing. Katie? So let's ask the question, I think that I heard posed earlier by the gentleman, was will these small cells be 4G or 5G? And will they have the ability to switch them over without coming back to us?
As of right now, for the applications we have seen, the technology has been 4G. They would be able to switch those to 5G with some equipment changeouts and things like that. And they do need to apply to the city for those modifications. Even under the current CUP or City Antenna Permit process, however, certain modifications would not necessarily require a noticed public hearing.
So you've been given the impossible task on behalf of staff to make everyone happy, which I'm sensing is not going to be something we're going to achieve. We got a lot of letters, emails from both proponents of this ordinance. We got a letter from legal counsel for AT&amp;T, a letter from legal counsel for Verizon. I don't know if we got any other legal counsel letters, but I think we've tried to take all of that stuff into consideration, along with the proposals. I'm going to turn it over to hopefully you and Scott, if we can, at a very high level, address, frankly, I don't want to wade into that right now, the high level, the constraints that we have. And I know there was, I think it was Courtney Morrow that put up a slide that had different ordinances with different distances that other cities have done, and I think the question looming large for everyone is, why are those differences? Why does it appear that some cities can have greater distances, and we're doing less? And why did we get there? And what are the legal constraints? And you get what I'm asking, I think, so.
Mayor and council, I'll do my best. I have Andrew McArdle here, my associate who does nothing but this, and so, Andrew, if you need to step up, I'll do my best. And I have appreciated the input from stakeholders and their lawyers in this case. Ms. Morrow put us in touch with a lawyer who'd been advising her and other stakeholders, and we went through his points and the points that are before you today. So it's okay if you all just take a second and hit those high points, there are about six of them. The package before you, well, what's before you for immediate action tonight is an ordinance and then a resolution relating to design standards. There's a lot more to follow as this progresses. There's an application package, which is very crucial to what staff's looking at in the scope of their review as that's submitted. And then you'll have policies and procedures and fees that are already on the books, but that also may be tweaked in these cases or augmented or modified so that they fit these sorts of applications better. So I just wanted, it's not an excuse to say there's more to come, but there is more to come. And a lot of the gaps that have been noted in these seminal enactments will be filled in as the specifics progress. So I wanted to say that, and Courtney has raised a few things that definitely fall into that category and we'll get to. There is a couple of those I can mention specifically relate to preconditions, especially regarding leaseholds and the right to have the facility on that particular property. The ordinance doesn't speak to that because every zoning and every land use application that comes to the city requires proof of ownership, whether it's ownership and a lease by the city relating to existing infrastructure and facilities, or whether it's on a private piece of property. Before that application is even stamped as accepted, that owner needs to bring in not only proof of ownership or a leasehold, but also proof of the pre-issuance of all other related permits. So there might be permits, for example, there will be, in San Clemente that need to be issued by the Coastal Commission. The city of San Clemente wouldn't even accept that application as complete until that precondition had been established and other related corollary permits issued by sister agencies. So that's not in here because it applies in every single instance that someone brings an application to the city. We can talk about this also, but I like the suggestion of documenting NEPA compliance, or at least the argument about why a particular exception applies. And I don't think there's any problem, Andrew, in asking-
Yeah, yeah.
We can ask as a precondition how the applicant thinks that works. I like that idea.
Is NEPA going to apply to a lot of these sites?
Well, it could. CEQA might also, but if it's exempt, which we're presuming it will be, we would want them to explain to us, not us to them, why that exemption might apply. So we'll take that into account, and that would be ministerially added to the application package. Those are preconditions. There are postconditions relating to legal compliance that were also raised by Mr. Strauss and Ms. Morrow, and those have to do with the shifting landscape of the regulatory scheme that underlies this, and the possibility that there might be stricter provisions adopted that we would want to have the benefit of and be able to enforce. And so your ordinance and the resolution that come forward just state simply that you have to be compliant with all laws to be hosted in San Clemente. So if a newer stricter law is adopted, you're not grandfathered and exempt from those laws. They become automatically a condition of our permitting as they're passed. So that, again, is kind of between the lines here, but something that will go into account under this regulatory scheme. Then I think that's it. Then the big question is, why wouldn't you require greater distancing or more elbow room between communities and residences in these facilities or between and among the facilities themselves? And that's the disparity you see among the communities that were posted on the board. The answer there is that this is art, not science, as it relates to those distancing. The federal regulations that apply to this require that the norm is that these permits issue ministerially. And so what we have to show, based on our distancing requirements and their business model, is that in most cases usually, given the map and the objective standards that are before you tonight, the likelihood is that a ministerial permit will issue, not that a discretionary permit issue. And so I think staff and its experts, and we, as your city attorneys, have looked carefully at that. What might be a larger distancing requirement in a flat place, for example, say Sacramento, that city could demand much greater distancing between facilities because they work better in that topography. San Clemente, as we all know, as we talk on the phone coming and going, has varied topography, and so to, and I'm not saying those communities don't have varied topography either, but having large distancing requirements here, or larger distancing requirements when you take into account the hills and dales and the topography, becomes more problematic and much more difficult to enforce. And what we are afraid of is that when that happened, requiring them to get discretionary exceptions approved would tilt your ordinance to being predominantly discretionary as opposed to ministerial, which is what the FCC requires. So I think that's, oh, I wanted to speak to appeals, that's the last thing. And those were some good points taken in the correspondence and in the comments tonight. As I think most people here know, there is a really short shot clock that applies to these applications. Once they're complete, we have to get going. And what that means is that there's very little time to study and hear and prepare for initial consideration of these permits, and especially appeals. So what that means is that if we had longer lead times for appeals and longer notices to the public of action taken on permits, we were afraid that you would be running out of time at the end of the day. And if an appeal is pending, we had a close one this year with the AT&amp;T package that's coming forward to you, we did run out of time in considering those. The risk of that, if the applicant's not willing to waive the shot clock, is that applications are deemed approved. So the consideration into these on balance is that it's better to front-load and get those initial hearings, they're not hearings, but the initial consideration and the appeals of those done at the front end of the process, so there's time to figure them out and act on them before the shot clock runs. At the ministerial level, I know a couple of council members have mentioned this to me, and we can consider it with your community development and management staff and the clerk's staff, but it would be possible, and I think you've done this in other cases, to create databases or notice boards of permits under consideration and permits coming or applications completed. There could be a shared document there that if members of the public wanted to subscribe to, I've seen other communities do this, or look at it periodically, right there, they could have immediate access to issues of concern in their neighborhood or applications that they've heard about or that might be pending or subject to appeal. So that's a lot of, that's, you know, a very little short response to a lot of good input we'd had on the legal issues, but that would kind of be my summary. Oh, except for this last thing, to say that as valid as they might be, the federal government prohibits you from considering health effects of cell facilities. So it's, of course, earnest testimony that you've heard tonight, but I want to instruct you for the record that you disregard that testimony as you consider the regulatory scheme before you. The different distancing between schools and residences, maybe Katie wants to explain that. I presume, and I've heard, that that's based on aesthetic considerations relating to the environs of our school. More likely than not, in San Clemente, you're going to find a school co-located with a park or other trails or passive recreational facilities. The thoroughfares surrounding our schools, for the most part, are landscaped and beautified, and that consideration isn't about health effects, it can't be, but rather about the aesthetic considerations of school environs. So I wanted to make that clear for the record, have Katie affirm that, because that can't be related to a presumption that kids are going to be hurt by the, she, what are they called?
RF.
That, yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Mayor Bain, I did want to kind of speak to your broader question, the slide that listed other cities that have these other separation distances. That one was between cell sites. You could put up a similar slide for between residences or schools. In this case, you saw the high end of what's been done. I could show you the low end, and I can tell you that we're somewhere in between, we're somewhere in the middle. And that was always staff's goal. The point about why 100 feet for residences and 500 feet for schools is well-taken. The reason for that, though, is it's not arbitrary. The reason for that is staff did hear the input from the public and their concerns about the ugliness of some of these sites potentially near their homes or right outside their front door. And while staff may have liked to put in a larger separation between residential properties and these small cells, when we really mapped it out, it started to look to staff like this would be somewhat prohibitive and that exceptions would become the rule. And this was not staff's goal, and in consultation with our legal counsel, we would be potentially in some exposed territory in terms of lawsuits, and I won't speak anymore to that. If Andrew feels like he needs to jump in, he certainly can. So at the high level of your question, if they can do it, why can't we? The answer to that is pretty simple. It's that just because they've done it, that's not a legal defense for us. It doesn't mean they won't get sued. I believe there actually has been a lawsuit filed just recently with a city that had these broader, I forget if it was 1,000 or 1,500, and they were sued because they denied an application based on that, even though an exception was applied for. So if you, someone jumps off a building, that doesn't make it a good idea. So we were operating on trying to find the middle ground between what the FCC requires of us, what the industry is asking for, and what the public is asking for. With regard to the NEPA concern, NEPA is applicable to actions of the federal government or on federal lands. So to your point, NEPA's not going to be applicable in these cases. CEQA would. And we do evaluate cell sites for CEQA, and we will. We evaluated this ordinance for CEQA. You'll find some discussion of that in the staff report as well as in the ordinance. So definitely CEQA review is a part of each of these applications. NEPA would not be.
I got a question. Katie, first off, great job. Thank you for standing up to the firing range and taking all these shots. Someone had to do it, and you drew the short stick, so thank you. With that, why did we include mixed use with the 100-foot for residential?
Well, simply because residences can be located in these locations, and it would be pretty difficult to do that on a case-by-case basis for our carriers. Like, is there actually a residence there or not? Because residential could be in any of those locations, we felt it was prudent to group those with residential.
That's interesting because someone is accepting living in a commercial district and accepting the environmental concerns of being in a commercial district if they live in a mixed use. So I'm wondering, we didn't look at how, if that was prohibitive, say, on El Camino Real, we might have- We might have an entire area that doesn't have any residential. Maybe in the future, in 50 years, there might be some. But what would happen to an application if there isn't any and it's all commercial? And a carrier wanted to put in a site?
So the mixed use areas were, were mapped when we kind of just did our informal mapping to kind of conceptualize the, the regulations we were proposing. There are still some, with the 100-foot separation, there are still some locations on El Camino Real and Del Mar, for example, where a lot of our mixed use is, is grouped, where it would be permitted. If a carrier found that they did need to locate in one of those prohibited locations, they can apply for an exception. But on balance, based on our mapping, it does appear that that would be the exception and not the rule.
So just a couple of quick questions since I have you. There was a comment made that one of our experts that came talked about that the radios were the same as a macro site. Can you comment to that?
So my, first of all, the city particularly hired Lee Afflerblock because his firm doesn't work for the industry. That was very important to, to staff and to the public. And so that's specifically why his firm was chosen. He did mention that in his fir, in his review of many, many small cells, none of which are in San Clemente, because he has not been contracted to do that work here yet. He asserted that the radios are basically the same, that they are a higher power of radio. That's not actually what we've seen in San Clemente. But also, something to consider is that with a small cell, you have one radio, two radios, maybe six or eight if it's a larger small cell where you have an enclosure near the base of the pole. Whereas a macro site, you may have many more. So while certainly you could be seeing the higher power radios, and apparently that particular expert has in his reviews, you, you don't necessarily. But either way, what he said was with those radios that he is seeing, the ones that you would use on a macro site, you know, a distance of, I think he specifically mentioned 60 feet, and it's in one of my attachments in, in your packet, would, would meet, you know, RF exposure requirements that FCC sets. So that, that's my recollection of what that expert said.
So with the 60-foot, we're well within that if we try to have these cells 100 feet away from exposure to homes?
We would be outside of the 60 feet if they were 100 feet away. And, and keep in mind that we are checking RF exposure with each application. So if a particular application was 200 feet from a residence where, and our ordinance said 100, we are still checking those radio frequency levels, both at the application and also in a post-installation test should it be constructed.
So that's part of the permit to verify that, that they are within the FCC guidelines?
Right. So you'll find that in the, in the draft application packet that we provided to you, as well as in the standard conditions of approval that are provided in your packet as well.
One of the things that I saw, what was interesting to me, because we looked, the residents did it and I did it, we looked at so many other cities and found out recently that the city of Calabasas was actually sued because their ordinance prohibited having the carriers provide the service they wanted to. But also, they were trying to authorize and enforce the FCC regulations on their own by doing their own studies. And that, they had to overturn that, and the year was 2014, which I had no idea in looking at that. So this has been going on for a long time, and we have some law, some lawsuits that we can see now. Los Altos was another city that I looked at that is just recently sued. And they had a greater distance, but they, they were found that in 90% of their city, they were prohibiting this, this, this use. So that, that they were sued for that, in violation of federal law is, is what I found. But it's interesting that it goes back to 2014. One of the other things that I saw that people said is, we're becoming the landlords. And Scott, I don't know if you touched on that, what is our liability? The fact that we have, these are our poles?
Let me, Andrew, would you speak to that? Because we did talk about how that liability is assigned to, to the lessee on that. Would you mind talking about how we do that? It's how we, how we shift risk of liability.
Do you want, do you want me to cover that?
Oh, you can, Katie. Yeah, we have a standard proviso. Yeah, go ahead if you know.
Andrew, please jump in if I miss anything. But, so in terms of us being the landlord, most of the poles in our rights-of-way, I think is probably what that commenter was talking about. Most of those are owned by the city. In some, in some jurisdictions, you have them owned by SDGNE or SCE. We do have a few poles, light poles or power poles, that are owned by SDGNE in our jurisdiction. Most of them are city-owned. That said, I think it's a little bit different than a landlord relationship because the rights-of-way are pursuant to the California Public Utilities Regulations. Telephone companies are entitled to use those. Now, when carriers do propose to locate on our facilities, so our poles, we do have a standard site license agreement. One has already been executed with AT&amp;T, and I believe maybe also Verizon, even though they have no proposed sites at this point. And that's a standard agreement that, that the city attorney's office has reviewed and gone back and forth with these carriers on. It has provisions in there that cover a great number of things, including who is liable for what in a great number of circumstances, maybe not if Godzilla attacks, but most of the other ones. And if you want to know specifics of what's in those site license agreements, they've been on agendas here at the city council, so I know you've all reviewed them. And we'd be happy to provide those to you. There are not any in your packets because they weren't directly relevant, at least to my mind.
Councilmember Ward, if I could just ask a quick question of, of council at this point. So if this new technology is, is so safe, obviously I would think that the AT&amp;T and Verizon would, would provide us, the city as being an additional insured and a hold harmless agreement, would they not?
What do we do with that, right?
I think we can ask for that as we would in the, in any other encroachment permit. Is that true? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we, we can do that, as you would with any other encroachment onto our infrastructure or our streets.
I was going to say, I think we had indemnity provisions in all of our agreements, so.
That's not, that's not preempted.
So, are you, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we require insurance and an additional endorsement of all the cell towers that we have in San Clemente that are leased on public property. We require that, so wouldn't we require the same of these?
In attachment four in the standard conditions of approval, it does talk about what insurance the carrier or the pole owner, or the facility owner, I'm sorry, themselves would have to carry. It also does ta, have a standard condition, and that's basically our standard condition for indemnities for, for all of our applications like this that we, we would process. And then there are, again, additional indemnification and, and very specific provisions. You know, if a car hits the pole, who is responsible for replacement of it, things like that? That is all covered in the standard site license agreements.
So I have, I have some, a couple of things to say. First, I want to thank staff for sort of great staff work, and, and Scott, thank you for your, your work here. Mr. Cortlinger and Mr. Hayes both spoke very eloquently of, of 5G. Mr. Hayes brought up the autonomous vehicle thing. I think that, I think that's huge, that, that's coming down the pike. Everyone knows that except for the TCA, I think. The, there are a couple of things that really concern me. This is rated as being safe by the FCC, which is a regulatory, which is a regulatory body of the federal government, which is, you can't really see much difference between the industry and the regulators. The industry goes into the FCC and regulates. You read, you read the, on your phone, your phone has a, if you go, let me, let me do this right now. I'm going to read this specifically, what you, what the phone says, but RF exposure. "To reduce exposure to RF energy, use a hands-free option such as the built-in speakerphone, the supplied headphones, or other similar devices." Wow. What's going on there? So I will ignore, I'll, I'll take council's advice and ignore speakers this evening, because I don't want to get the city sued. But I will be an adamant no on this because they're so damn ugly. Thank you.
If I may, thank you, Mayor Bain. I think I agree with a couple of the speakers tonight that a 500-foot distance from residential homes, equivalent to the schools and parks, would, I would support that more so than the 100 feet. Because once you take into account the various competing carriers that will start installing on the public infrastructure in the right-of-way, you know, they're not consistent in terms of the equipment that they install. So aesthetically, yes, very displeasing to the eye and to those who live there. It's a public blight nuisance. So I would, I would actually like to see that revised in this tonight. And the, also I want to note that the other cities that were shown tonight in the table, as Councilmember Ward had noted, some perceived, have some lawsuits already against them. And I know Encinitas, several people referenced the Encinitas ordinance, which is very well done. But I did want to make a note factually that they have not had any applications yet to really test that ordinance. So that's important to point out as well. So, thank you.
Any other comments or motion?
So this is going to be fun for me tonight as well, Gene. So, you know, a lot of people have concern about my interest in legal battles within this community and how I spend too much on Scott over there. I've been a firm believer that if we have a community that rises up and has a serious concern that we need to fight it, we need to represent the community. So obviously I'll be supporting Gene and not supporting this.
Kate, do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to make an amendment to this. But I need to figure out where I will put this. I just want to make a, a revision to it, including the 500 feet from residential homes. But help me out here, I'm trying to figure out where I would put that. Maybe, maybe Katie could help me out where I might want to put that.
Yeah, so the 500 feet to residential, to add that, that would be in the design and development standards.
Okay.
Attachment two. And so that would be the resolution, that, that particular change would not change the ordinance.
Okay. So I would do that under section two and call it attachment, oh, down here, okay. All right, well, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation to find, make a motion to find the amendment is not a project. To, or to adopt the planning commission recommendation to find the amendment is not a project pursuant to CEQA. CEQA guidelines, section 15378, or alternatively, that is, that it is exempt under the common sense exemption, CEQA guideline, section 15061B3. Number two, introduce ordinance number 1690 entitled Inordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending portions of chapter 17.88 definitions, 17.28 special uses, 17.16 applications, and 17.12 development review process of the zoning ordinance to update permitting requirements for small cell facilities. And number three, adopt resolution number 20-07 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, adopting design and development standards for small cell facilities with a revision to the distance from residential neighborhoods from 100 feet, from residential or mixed-use properties, excuse me, to 500 feet.
Okay, I'm going to second that with a friendly amendment. There's a parenthetical that I want to make sure is lined out, and if, Scott, if you could help me remember.
Yeah, thanks. This was, I alluded to this earlier in talking about compliance with the laws, whatever they might be. And that's on page 78-17, it's in the ordinance. In G, there's a section called Required Finding Decisions and Consultants. And if you go down to G1B Romanette 2, there's a parenthetical there, i.e. there are no viable. We'd propose striking that parenthetical. It, it, it's good without that unless, less confusing or ambiguous.
Yeah, I, I'm making a friendly amendment to include that and hope I, yeah, we can get that through. And, and look, I mean, I've been involved in the process, I met with a lot of the folks. Unfortunately, I couldn't meet with the reserve folks because I had to recuse from that application. But met with a lot of the reserve, excuse me, the Rancho San Clemente folks about this. And, you know, guys, I understand that the desire to sort of want to say no to this, but then we go straight back to the application process we had before, which is going to get us right back into the same situation. And I heard a lot of these same folks say they wanted an ordinance, and this is what we've got. I think we struck with these amendments a good tension between what we absolutely can do versus what we can't do. And I think that's unfortunately, where we are at city officials is we're doing the very best we can. I think somebody said be brave. If you read the letters from the lawyers we got today, trust me, we're being brave, especially with this amendment. And I, I definitely respect what Chris said about protecting quality of life. I agree with that. But knowing that we don't have this ordinance in place, we will get sued. And if we do anything more than we're doing now, it's a foregone conclusion. And I definitely do not want any more lawsuits if we can avoid them. So I think we've gotten to a place where we can walk that very fine line. And to the folks that are here from the industry, from Verizon, AT&amp;T, I think you heard from a lot of your customers about what they want. So I would urge you that if you do consider a lawsuit, think about your customers and what they've, what they've, what they've told you tonight. And I hope that you'll agree that this is a, a balance in addressing the aesthetics issues that we have and exerting what little local control we have left. So with that, I'll ask for, we have a motion and a second by me on favor. Oh, sorry.
Can we have discussion before we take a vote?
Please.
So I think on the 500-foot that we talk about for schools, that is more appropriate than a 100-foot because that's a larger parcel. It's a bigger piece of property than our postage stamp lots that we have, most of us in the city. So I think it's appropriate for it to be 500 feet. But I think maybe there's a compromise that we don't have to do 500 feet from homes. We could do a 300-foot, and maybe that would give.
Sorry, folks, please, please be quiet. I know this is a passionate topic, but we got to give everyone the, the respect to let them speak. And certainly we try not to interrupt anyone, so please let Councilmember Ward.
So I'm just, I'm wondering if there's any appetite for, you know, because I'm really surprised that this council's willing to be sued on this. But I'm wondering if we just increased it, if we, that the carriers could still find a way to provide service, but it would be greater than the 100-foot, but still less than the 500-foot? Because I am concerned, and I don't know if I can vote for that, that it would be limiting where there would be no service. And I don't know if I'm willing to go that far.
So I'm, I'm concerned about being sued, so I don't want to give you that perception. But as between.
I just want it stated.
As between a no and no ordinance and 500 feet or 300 feet, I believe that with the 500-foot, with the exception provisions that we've provided in here, there is that sort of catch-all and safety net. And again, I, my hope is that for the industry folks out there that are listening. And again, my hope is that for the industry folks out there that are listening to this, they're weighing with us the desires of their customers and our need, and evaluating whether to sue our ordinance here or not. So, I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to stay with a 500-foot.
Okay.
And I just want to state for the record, I do appreciate, know what you're trying to do, which is to avoid lawsuits. And so I note that for the record. I do share that concern.
So just note that it will be, will go to an exception, and the carriers will then have to prove that they need it. So I agree that we will have more information. So based on that, I will agree to vote on that.
Thank you. So I think that's, again, a good compromise and attention of where we are. And I appreciate everyone's position here, because trust me, I could vote any one of those three ways, frankly. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay, so passes three to two with the amendments proposed by Mayor Protome and myself.
Next is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer.
And I hate to do this to Tom, because he's been waiting, but can we take a five-minute break and let folks clear out, who I'm sure want to clear out?
All right, so we're gonna call the meeting back to order. I know it's a lot more fun to catch up with friends, but we'll try to, we'll try to get this, get this show on the road.
Okay, this is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer, concerning a possible new Orange County Sheriff Department substation.
Good evening Mayor Bain and members of the City Council, Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. This item is before you at your request to consider the direction we should take concerning how to reestablish a sheriff's substation in the city. I've provided some background information in the report for your consideration, and at this time, staff is available to answer your questions and get your direction as to how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, great, thank you, and before we call the speakers up, I'll just note that we did get, I believe, two letters of support. One from Tom Dominguez from the Deputies Association, another one from, was it Ketchum? Somebody from the Sheriff's Department, also, or Hallick, I'm sorry, thank you, from the Sheriff's Department, supporting, I think, the build out of the current City Hall site, second floor. So with that, Rick Lefler, and then Bill Hart.
Hi, Council, haven't been here in a few months, so I was waiting and pondering on things coming up on the agenda that I wanted to speak to, and they finally came up, and so here I am, on the police station. It's second floor of the new City Hall, that's where it should be. Might not be the most perfect place, but the sheriffs, and I've done my research on this, and everybody in the Sheriff's Department has come to the conclusion that this is the place to put it. We need that sheriff's station sooner than later. Let's go on beyond the fact that, you know, there's asbestos here, and there's a leaky trailer they're working in. The fact is, we're not getting the quality of deputies that we need to have because we don't have a decent police station. Deputies don't want to come and work in San Clemente. If you live in Riverside, where do you want to go work? You want to work in Lake Forest. Mr. Dunick here was, oversaw the building of the police station that they have there, and I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's like the end of the red brick, or yellow brick road, and it's like, oh, I mean, it's beautiful. And deputies want to go work there, they want to drive there, they want to work there because it's a great facility. We can't have that facility, we don't have the room, we don't have the spot, but we can have a good facility where deputies will want to come down here and work. We don't have six deputies working, a lot of times, we have three deputies and three trainees, which is fine, they've got to get trained. I was a training officer for many years, and I can tell you that working with a trainee is not the same as having a beat partner in a different car responding to calls. It's not the same, you don't get the same proactive police work from them, you have a trainee. We can get better deputies here when we get that facility. So here's my point, and I think City Manager Dunick is great that he's down here to oversee this, we need to fast-track this. We know where it's gonna go, we know, we know what we need to do, I just, I don't want to see a bunch of bureaucracy here, this is a city emergency. We need to get this put in place, and hearing about nine months to a year, my God, I live right in the far and north end of San Clemente, and on Comino Capistrano, just into Dana Point, they're building a 6,000-square-foot, $10-million house on the bluff that they're starting from dirt, and it's going to be done in six months. We can get this done if we fast-track it, and I think, having City Manager Dunick, I know you know how to do this, and I know you know how important it is, and I know you saw the difference of the quality of deputies you got in Lake Forest when you had a good facility. So let's get together and make this happen quick, we can do, hey, I'll bring a paintbrush myself. Whatever it takes to get Lieutenant Manhart into a good station, so he can start bringing in, in quality deputies. And you know, I've been critical of the police department and their interaction, you know, their proactivity, well, that puts me in a bad spot when they're not given the best environment to do it. Let's get them down here, let's improve the police department, and I'll still be on them if there's a problem, Lieutenant Manhart knows that, but let's give them the resources they need, right away, thank you.
Thank you, Bill Hart?
No surprise, but I'm coming, coming up here in support of the police substation, I do believe it is important. When we have deputies who, who come to work in this town, they seem more connected. Since our substation did close down, and I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but I believe we have seen a degradation in, in the relationship between the community and our sheriff's deputies. And we've got to reestablish that, that does no one any good to, to lose that connection. We were blessed for years and years and years, even back to the point where there was San Clemente PD, we were blessed with the location of that station and the direct connection that deputies or, before that, officers were, had with our community. And we need to reestablish that, I encourage us to build it out, I encourage a quality build. There were deficiencies in the old substation that we do, that did need to be corrected at the time, there were bad deficiencies, this is an opportunity to do it right. I hope someday we can have something that Rick described, which is a freestanding police station. We certainly have good fire stations for our OCFA, and perhaps that's a deal we can cut with a developer someday in the future, is to build a, a true police station. But until then, let's, let's get this one in place, let's do it fast, and let's do it with quality in mind, and, and really support our OCSD deputies, and get them back, and better engaged with our community, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill, any other cards on this? Okay, Councilmember Ham?
Yeah, open up. So, did I read the minutes right, Gene, did you bring this up?
I did.
Okay, first off, I commend you for bringing this up, this is a very important issue. I think having a police substation in the city of San Clemente has given us much better service than a lot of other South County cities that don't have a substation. That being said, in my mind, there couldn't be a worse location than the second story of Negocio City Hall. So every single lieutenant we've had, since I've been here the last seven years, other than the one sitting in the back of the room right now, has expressed concern for that location. And let me, let me explain why we have concern for that location. So first off, between 8:30 and 9:30, and 4:30 and 5:30, it's nearly impossible to get out of the business park because there's so much traffic. Whether you're heading west or east, there's just traffic. The other concern, and I can speak to this directly, is that most times of the day, Avenue de Pico is the busiest arterial in the city of San Clemente. And while I know Manhart and probably the other chiefs who've supported this at the Sheriff's Department said, oh, well, we have Code Three lights, and we can just oppose. One of the problems with Avenue de Pico that's different than every other major thoroughfare is we have multiple intersections, and we have high center medians between those intersections. So what ends up happening is even though you turn the lights green, you have cars stacked up on both sides, and you can't physically actually oppose unless it's the middle of the night. So while I understand their desire and need for a new station, and I support the need, this location couldn't be any worse for me. And I know that we've discussed this at other times, and I think there's other more viable places, and I think we have funding for those other more viable places, so I'm not recommending a study. I think we just move ahead on one of those other more viable locations that's gonna be more accessible, where we had our previous homeless shelter. So that's gonna be my recommendation this evening, is to move forward on that location.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Bain. I wanted to note also that we just learned last week that the outlets, the owner of the San Clemente outlets is going to provide some space for a satellite substation, so that'll be really great to see, a secondary spot, so not in lieu of this one, but wherever this ends up being, but as a supplement to that, so that'll be great. I'm, I'm not at this time willing to consider a standalone building because we just don't have the money. And then, secondly, this building, the remodel, we've already gone about a million over budget, so I think we really, and with the second-floor tenant, as Councilmember James brought up at the prior meeting, moving out, it frees up 15,000 square feet, right? So I know we lose rental revenue, but to put the police somewhere else, we'd have to pay rent there as well, so, and it gives them additional square footage, they had 9,000 square feet before, so a lot more room to be reunited there, and I'm looking forward to having them back after eight, eight months away from San Clemente, so, and I echo the sentiments of those who spoke tonight as well, so thank you for speaking up.
I would, um...
Councilmember James?
I would add that, Chris, the only thing I would, I would counter you with is those deputies should be out on routine patrol somewhere, rather than being, being in the station. So I think it would be even more important for those deputies to be out on, out on patrol, and not have a, a gathering of deputies in that, in that station, should we go, go forward with that. Additionally, the other thing I'm, I'm looking at is how quickly we can do this, and how it will be rather, I don't want to use the word cheaper, but we won't spend as much money doing this as building a standalone station, station. For, for, for the city manager, I would ask, have you, has Lieutenant Manhart looked at the facility, and what does he think about the facility? How much, how much retro do we need to do, how much deconstruction, reconstruction do we need to do, and what is his concerns of, does he have the same concerns as Councilmember Ham?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, I'd like Eric Sun to perhaps answer that question, because I have not taken a tour yet with the, even of the second floor, with the chief, but I'm, I'm sure we've had other conversations with staff.
So Councilmember James, Mayor and the City Council, so I've had an opportunity to talk to Lieutenant Manhart, we've also had an opportunity, he was in training last week in Texas, and command staff came down last week and toured the facility as well to see the second floor and, and the available space. Both parties have agreed that it would work, there is a hope that we would have minimal construction, but there are going to be improvements that are going to be needed, whether it's a kitchen, or locker rooms, or gun storage, et cetera, that needs to be accommodated for OCSD. We're hoping, and Director Tom Bonniget is aware of this, that we'll be able to work within the confinement of the existing layout to the best of our ability. Once, if council's taking action tonight, we'll be starting a stakeholder group shortly thereafter with OCSD to start working with our designer. Don't want to take away from Tom's thunder, but tonight, we're asking for direction, the second step, if direction was given, if it was to go with staff's recommendation, we'd be coming back at the next council meeting for an amendment to a space planner that we already have on contract for our first-floor renovations. So then she could immediately begin working with the stakeholder group to determine a layout and start to build specifications to go out to bid for construction.
And you've spoken, and Lieutenant Manhart's been part of this?
Lieutenant Manhart's been part of this, and is aware of the location, and has approved the location.
Councilmember Ward?
Eric, you sat down too fast. I'm sorry, I was getting permission to speak.
That's all right.
I, I'm thinking about past councils and long-range planning that we had. If, I think we, we're planning on leaving this building also, I'm speaking of the council, and we were looking at possible places for, to have city council meetings.
Correct.
And I do remember a discussion that we would probably, because we were leaving the building, we would have to find a substation, and there was talk, tell me if I'm wrong, of building where we could have council chambers adjacent to the police station.
So originally, we had put into the CIP budget a $75,000 feasibility study to look at locations. We knew there were only going to be a handful of locations, second floor, the site next to the maintenance yard that we used for our campsite, and possibly another location with regards to feasibility. Original discussion was if we were going to be putting this facility presidio on the market, and it was to potentially sell or be leased for another use, we'd have to find a new home for the council chambers. If you recall, with the Vista Hermosa general plan, when Vista Hermosa was built, there was also a component of a meeting and conference room that was originally designed for that location. And so the thought process with staff was, is if this facility sold, and we needed a new home for the council chambers, more than likely, we'd revisit the Vista Hermosa general plan to see about adding a council chambers and conference room. Kind of similar to Lake Forest in terms of what they've just kind of unveiled with having a dual-purpose facility as the location for the council chambers. But I don't recall the discussion of having the substation next to that as part of that discussion.
Because it seemed to me it was tied to what we were gonna have to do with the substation, if we left this building, that's what I remember. So don't we have a budget for the substation?
We...
Public safety?
We have a public safety mitigation fee, and we have to provide a nexus to show that the development is requiring us to do this construction, it can only be used for construction. And so, much like more recently, we installed a fuel tank at a fire station, we use some of the public safety fees for that because, for fire state, for fire engines to be able to gas up and not leave the city. And so, yes, we would be looking at that as part of the budget for this, it wouldn't be the sole budget, but it would be a large percentage of that budget, along with general fund monies.
So what is our budget for that?
It's undetermined at this point, once the designer, if the...
No, I misspoke, what is the fund?
It's about, about $4.5 million.
So when we heard that we do not have money, and that's why it's good to, to do this quick thing, we do actually have money set aside for this?
We do have public safety mitigation fees, correct.
So, I, again, I'm just, to your point of a better location, I was one of the councilmembers that was told too, that we needed to be closer to the freeway to have a substation, and so, having that money, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering why the rush to do it now and put it in the second floor, when maybe we should do something that's better long-term. We have, the deputies, they're not out of our city, they are sitting right now on the third floor. I understand there isn't a locker room and things like that, but that might be something that could, you know, is a temporary situation. I'm just wondering, you know, why we wouldn't spend the $75,000 and look at the other possibilities, rather than spending the money on this and just deciding real quick, this is the best answer. That's just a question to my colleagues, you know?
Jumping in, that's quite, Councilmember James?
Yeah, I, I think, one thing, I think we have a morale problem going. I think we need to get these deputies back, they are commuting back and forth from Elisa Viejo, and I learned today that actually, we're going to get charged rent. Mr. City Manager, is that true?
Yes, Councilmember James, the, the Sheriff's Department will, will charge additional funds to the city because we're taking a bigger space at Elisa Viejo. I think that's still subject to some conversations and negotiation with them, but nevertheless, yes, and there's also additional transportation costs, because they're driving from Elisa Viejo here. And, and so there's additional costs that we might see billed to the city over the course of probably two fiscal years, is what I understand.
Councilmember Ward, the other thing I'm looking at is bringing those, those deputies, bringing police services into, into one building with, with, with the city, and, and giving them some connection to the city, which I don't think they have right now. And that's the reason I'm looking at expediting this as, as quickly as possible.
So we've been talking about Chief Manhart, Chief, do you want to come up and say anything, or are you good? Because I think, look, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert in, you know, some of the issues that Chris has raised, frankly, I mean, Chris has far more expertise in that regard, so all I can do is rely on the Sheriff's Department and, and what they sort of think of the circulation and the issues there.
Starting off with, I don't believe that you're actually correct with Lieutenant Doria. Lieutenant Doria, I believe that there were some square footage issues that what he wanted and what was feasible, I think that that's why that plan broke down, I apologize for my voice. That's okay. But, no, I think it can work, I understand the concerns about Code Three responses, whatnot, but the deputies would not be all saturated inside the station, and a call comes out. Having the substation that we talked about, the outlets, also has the assistance of removing some deputies from the center of the city and putting them closer to the freeway. You talked about a station, putting a station closer to the freeway, in a perfect world, perfect world downstairs is the best location, but there just isn't any property for that, that's just not gonna happen. So looking at, at what would work, I do agree with having us, when we were kicked out of the building downstairs, I had asked to come back to City Hall, me and my admin sergeant, to be connected with the city, because it was important to do that, and that's the reason my office was there. So having the entire staff in the city, in City Hall, I think is, is instrumental in having the relationship with the city.
Chief, and we spoke once, and we, and I think you had concerns about the Pico lot and fulfilling all your parking needs as well, is that correct?
Pico, Pico lot near the, near the pumps?
No, 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 yeah, the Pico lot, the former campsite.
Campsite, well, let's back up, we, we didn't even get to a point where we designed a building and a location, so I couldn't, I couldn't speak if it would fit or if it wouldn't, but we never even got to that point.
Okay.
But that would be a challenge to, to go there as well.
Sure. Any questions to Chief Manhart, why I have him up here? So I, thanks, Chief Manhart, thanks for coming up and being a support, but, so, the questions for me, and, and look, with that, I mean, nobody's raised any objections about, at least from OCSD, about this being a bad spot. I think for me, I had discussions with City Manager Maxchinoff many months, saying, starting back in June, and perhaps other people did, about different locations, the Pico lot was discussed, and I think the reason that this is now an option, and before he left, I think, you know, James Maxchinoff and Eric, and we talked about, this would be a, a good viable alternative, because we didn't expect the tenant to leave, and now we have all this square footage. OCSD seems to be happy with the location, hearing no objection, I'm, I'm not an expert, so if there is an issue with, with, you know, with getting to areas of the city, I definitely want to know about that, but it's an opportunity, and I'll use the word symbiosis, which we've not had a lot with OCSD of late, so I think it's an opportunity for the city and OCSD to mix, to, to get the relationship going, to communicate, which seems to not be happening very effectively across the board. And then, the chance to get facilities, not just to OCSD, but I've heard talk about having like a little fitness facility in there, that our own city staff can utilize as well, and when you talk about, you know, sort of resources, and again, the symbiosis, I think this is a perfect solution. And I don't know if in 20 years, this is still gonna be a good solution, but I don't think it's gonna cost four and a half million bucks, and the, the Pico site, you're right, it better not, the Pico site was gonna be a modular building, and I think that was sort of the idea, and when I think about a modular building versus building out what we have at the new City Hall, I just think that's such a much more attractive amenity that we can tout for deputy recruitment, for city recruitment, and investing that into the city resource. So I think I'm gonna be supportive of the Negocio location, but again, I mean, Councilmember Ham is far more of an expert in this than I am, so if there is any hint of any issue at this, I want to know about it, because I think that's a valid concern, and, in any event.
So I'll just, I'll just come real quick, I'm probably not gonna be supporting the Negocio site, I appreciate what Gene said about having the deputies out in the field. Unfortunately, Gene hasn't been sitting at this dais as long as some of us have, to hear the multiple sirens take off out of this location at once, to show that they're not always out in the field. And, well, I appreciate Chief Manhart's perspective on that, you know, I don't have concern about a couple deputies hanging out in the substation, waiting to respond. What I do have concern about is a couple of deputies hanging out to respond from a location that's gonna be unadvantageous for the residents of San Clemente, and I think Negocio will be that. So I won't be supportive, but I understand why you guys are gonna be supportive.
So, Councilmember James, you wanted this item, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to provide direction to staff on creating an OCSD substation at 910 Cali Negocio, in the City Hall building.
So I'm gonna second that with a friendly amendment, I, I'd like, I don't know who's the appropriate person, whether it's Hallick or others, to have a meeting with, perhaps Eric, if you could do this, to look at, and City Manager Dunick, to talk about these concerns, about the site circulation and sort of the access issues, to make sure that we are squared away there. And assuming that, then yeah, go forward with the direction, so I think that's, Chris has sufficiently concerned me that I want that, I want that looked into, so. So a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so it passes three to two, as amended.
Oral Communications Part Two, I do have two cars.
Rick Lefler, followed by Michelle Brooks.
I had to turn my phone off, because I know it's gonna blow up now, on what I'm about to talk about. And, except for the city manager, you guys are gonna look at me and go, who is this person? But this is tying into the OCSD, for the last couple of months, I've been talking to people and looking at, how can we make our city better in regards to the homeless emergency here? And I know people talk about our own police department, they've talked about, and you know, I, I've just come up with, with the fact that I don't think that that's gonna necessarily ensure anything. There's only one thing that's gonna ensure that we get some more proactivity from the sheriffs, and that's to have a homeless shelter in our city. So with that, I started looking around and talk, again, talking to people, and trying to figure out what, I mean, we can talk about the homeless shelter, we talked about the Taj... Taj Mahal here a few months ago, and, but what would the sheriff recognize as a homeless shelter to where they would enforce camping? And I came up with a, I was astonished that the sheriffs don't expect us to have a hard building. We could have a, one of those, not tent things, but you know, like hard side vinyl building that they use at, you know, special events and whatever, you know, big enough to have twenty-five beds. The sheriff would accept that. Do we have to have permanent bathrooms and animal control and all that? No. We just have to have some kind of porta potties or truck-mounted bathrooms? They would accept that. And with that being said, I asked a specific question. So, if we had that, the city had that, would you go enforce the no camping in our city? And I got it from several sources and sources that I trust, yes, we would. And I specifically said, would you go down with Duane as his ten up and, you know, with all of his issues with ACLU, but if he was camped there, would you cite him for no camping? If he refused to go to the shelter? Yes, we would. I believe them. I believe that the only reason we haven't gotten to proactivity is because we haven't had a shelter. The campground wasn't a shelter, according to the sheriffs, and that's fine. That's up to opinion and that was their opinion. So, what do we need to do? And that, I just keep coming back to this. And I, nobody wants it in their city, I understand that. And we don't want to be first. Well, there's nobody's going to be first. So, we've got a great location up at, you know, where the dog park is. I mean, it's separated and we could do it fairly quickly and fairly inexpensively. I think we could, we could even work out, I'm sure Scott could go down and work out something with the sheriffs, to where they committed that, yes, we will enforce the laws if we have whatever shelter is we were proposing. I think they would agree to that. I think we could probably get something also through Scott. I think we could get a settlement with Judge Anderson and maybe even the ACLU that would allow us to just have it a local base, you know, locals are taken care of first. And with all that said, don't have to worry about being filled up. We saw what happened to the campground. As soon as we put in rules, all of a sudden, there was nobody there, as soon as we had ties to the community. And I also got a commitment from the sheriffs that I believe, they will help us vet that location. They will run the people that go in there for wants and warrants, to make sure we don't have fugitives, to search their things before we put in there. I just think it's time that we start looking at alternatives. Thank you.
Well, and Rick, I'll just note that we are, and that's why we've got the, yeah.
I will, but it's not always top what we're doing.
Well, no, it is, because we've started the process for the amendment that's been going for a while. So, unfortunately, things like environmental review, so we don't get sued again, are taking some time.
I was kind of adding the sheriff, the law enforcement side of it.
No, I know, I'm just letting you know. I'm letting you know, we're on it.
Dude, we're all, I've got your back.
But you might want to, you might want to go hide for a while with those comments.
I turned my phone on, I won't be on for three weeks now.
Ms. Brooks.
Hi, everyone. It's great to see a full council tonight, and I'm super excited about our interim city managers, so welcome. I wanted to talk, actually, similar to Rick, and I just didn't put it under the police station. So, I just wanted to stress the importance of urgency and making this happen because I feel like we've been telling our sheriffs, and correct me if I'm wrong on the timeline, but I feel like we've been saying this for maybe a year about updating our police station. I know well before Gene ran on his campaign, he warned of asbestos in the police station. I've sent numerous emails about how come the funding for fire is different from police, and I just don't understand why we don't have such a nice police station, especially now when we look and depend on our police so much more than ever before, at least I personally do. I just really want to send the message that we support them. We give them everything that they need, like we do to our fire department. And I just think that they need a really nice police station. I'm a little concerned about the points raised tonight. I wonder, I just wonder why they haven't been raised eight months ago when they shut down this police station. I feel like, I know we've been searching for a place, I know the tenants just moved out of the second floor, but Chris's concerns, I don't know why those weren't raised earlier because I really feel like we need to move forward with this and make a decision. As far as Chris's concerns about deputies, Lieutenant Manhart tells his deputies to not hang out in the police station. He tells his deputies to be patrolling the streets. So, if you see two or three police cars leave at the same time to go on a call, that seems like an issue that should be addressed directly. Let Lieutenant Manhart know, maybe his police weren't patrolling like they should be doing, and that should be something that should be addressed. Last thing, I just, I'm really concerned, as I'm sure most people are, about the Ranch San Clemente Business Park deal going through. I'm sure there's a lot you guys are doing behind the scenes that maybe we aren't privy to. I just really want to stress the emphasis for, before we jump into a shelter, Sheriff Barnes told me months ago directly, don't be the first, don't be the only city to do it. So, maybe you guys could reach out to Mission Viejo, Lake Forest, all the cities that seem to be super beautiful and clean, Dana Point, San Juan, see if they'd all build their own shelter. I would support our own small little shelter if we could enforce, and everybody else was doing it too. I don't advise we be the only ones until we have protection from our police. Maybe if it could be run sober and dry with all the rules, but once it gets full, we're right back where we are at square one, just like we are one year later, one million dollars later, everybody's back at North Beach. So, I don't know what we accomplished in the last year, except maybe we learned a lot. So, I thank you all for your due diligence, and I trust we're all working behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have two comments that I'd like to make. One is, again, to thank you for the opportunity to serve you and this community while you're in transition for a new city manager and change in your professional staff. Being back on this side of the dais is feeling like old home again. But that said, I appreciate the opportunity and want to thank each of you for that. The other thing I would just mention quickly is, and I know the crowd has thinned out quite a bit, but we do have a community meeting tomorrow night at our community center about the incident on Cordova, five thirty. And so, the staff will be there, and I know we've reached out to all the residents on that street. Certainly, I know the council is very concerned and so is the staff about that. We want to ensure that we are providing the right response and obviously looking at all of the options as it relates to that issue and when the timing is appropriate, bringing it back to the council. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further this evening.
City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just three quick things that are in process we want to tell you about because you've asked us to do them. The first follows up on Mr. Dunick's comments about the incident at Avenue de Cordova. And you asked us to work aggressively, to look at providing the city and the sheriff all available tools, well, and renters all available tools, to be able to intervene in situations like that. So, we've been in contact and consultation with county council over those issues. They involve landlord tenant issues, nuisance issues, and Fourth Amendment issues. But I think we have a good understanding about where they stand, what they believe, and what they think we can enable the city to do to enhance its ability and owners' abilities to get into houses that are running out of control. And so, we have a draft ordinance ready to go. It centered mostly on your noise ordinance because that ordinance is very objective. If a noise is coming out of a house, it's a violation. And we think that we can take that with a lease template, a rental template, make those requirements of your ordinance so that every landlord or every vacation renter has to use that template, which enables them to gain greater access to a house under those sorts of situations. So, that'll be coming back. I think it'll be ready to go, if not your next meeting, for sure, the meeting after that. We want to get county councils bussing of that because we don't want to have you pass it and them not authorize the sheriff to use it, but I think we have that. Secondly, I wanted to mention that, it was noted last year that the city doesn't have any, well, any clear enacted policies relating to city facilities and city resources and campaign activities. We call those Stanson v. Mott policies because that case, Stanson v. Mott, was about that. And so, we took a template that we have, adapted it to the city's needs. It's easy to understand and clear, and we'll be bringing that to you. Before we did that, we thought it was important to meet and confer with your employees association about that. So, Mr. Sund and I did that the week before last. The draft was well-received, and we expect to hear from, to get their sign off and to bring it to you in the very near future. With the registrar making the presentation tonight, I wanted to tell you that our hope is to get that on the books before the election, certainly the general election. You'll be able to do that. And last but not least, we vetted last week with Bob and Eric, our portion of a presentation relating to the city attorney budget, current, past, that we will have on your next agenda. We hope to be able to get you together at four thirty to front-load that part of the city's budget because you asked us to do that. We'll have a workshop or a study session from four thirty to five thirty, and then closed session at five thirty. There's some elements of it that are confidential, where the information and work product is tied to the budget information. We'll give you that in closed session, but the vast majority of it will be before you. You usually evaluate us on the anniversary of our contract, which is March. So, we'll ask Bob and Eric to tee that up next meeting also so that you are kicking off the qualitative evaluation for the meeting in March when that usually happens. That's it.
Representative Tim?
If I may, thank you. I expressed to the city clerk that I'm unable to get to the library advisory board meetings on a third Thursday of the month in Santa Ana, and I'm not making those meetings, so I wanted to let everyone know I can't serve on that. And if anyone would like my appointment, please let me know. Or think about it.
I think the city clerk's going to have to fill that, but I'm unable to take any more out-of-town boards. I'm on quite a few.
Thank you.
I think I need to agendize this for the next meeting.
Okay, that's great. And then, secondly, if I may, if the council's interested, I made a post on social media about charter cities, the difference between charter cities and general law cities, and had quite a few comments, a lot of engagement on there, a lot of interest. So, I wanted to offer to council, if you're interested in this concept of a charter city, one hundred and eight cities out of four hundred and seventy-eight in the state of California are charter cities, gives more local rule over state law. So, if you're interested, I'll put together a tray memo to share with you and get your comments at a future meeting. Would you be interested in seeing that? And no staff time will be involved, I'll read it myself.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a look at that. I will say that I was a lot more interested in the concept before, I mean, Huntington Beach had some success with their sanctuary city rule. They got overturned by the Fourth District Court of Appeal, so I don't know that there's quite as much value in charter cities now. And now, New York Beach, I know, is challenging the housing enactments that are being sent down from Sacramento, and they're already starting to get some chatter that they might be sued for that. So, I'm willing to look at it because local control and city control is always great. So, if you're willing to do that, then God bless you for it, so.
Thank you. City clerk, do I need a vote on that to do a tray memo?
There was two supporting, I think, and three actually with Gene, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, I, I'll go next unless there's any other comments. Joanne was so gracious to give me these to read. The city clerk's office is currently accepting applications from persons interested in filling five openings on the newly formed Public Safety Committee. Applicants should have a background in public safety, for example, retired police, fire, or marine chief, officer, lifeguard, et cetera. City residency is not required. If you're interested in this service opportunity, please log into the city's website at www.sanclemente.org and click the link relating to the Public Safety Committee that is listed under latest news. You may also call the city clerk's office at nine four nine three six one eight three four five to obtain additional information or to be sent an application. Applications must be received in the city clerk's office by five thirty PM on Monday, February twenty-fourth, 2020. Council will conduct interviews and make appointments prior to one of its regular meetings in March 2020. And then, I just wanted to note that last two weeks, I've met with a number of state legislators on the toll road issue. I think a lot of progress is being made in that front. And, yeah, so just wanted to let folks know that there are regional meetings, and then I've also had some meetings on the homeless issue with some of our, some of my colleagues in Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano. And unhappy to report, there's no progress being made on the regional shelter front because everybody is much like us and doesn't want to host, but those discussions are ongoing. And I also had a good conversation with Paul Webster, who used to be at Solutions for Change down in Oceanside or Vista? Who is now at HUD in the Trump administration, is heading up the homeless issues up in Los Angeles. And Paul reached out to me with interest in our approach that we've utilized in addressing our homeless situation in San Clemente in large respect because while we've been willing to show compassion, we've also not shied away from enforcement. So, I think the administration is interested in that approach, and so I shared all that I could with Paul and asked the administration at HUD for any assistance they could provide us, which I'm still waiting for, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. The, in the last council meeting, I brought up taking a look at group feedings and how we regulate that. I had a conversation with Mr. Smith, and it looks like we should take a look at rewriting the special events ordinance because we could put it, we could slip that into the special events.
So, you should ask for that to be agendized? For staff to bring a staff report back on that?
Ask for it to be agendized.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Or he's asking for it now.
I'm asking for it now.
Right. Oh, I thought you asked for it at the last meeting.
I thought I did.
I thought you did.
I thought I did.
That's why I was saying if you want a staff report.
He asked us to look at it, and we did, and thought it ought to be folded into-
So, now we're going to have to agendize it by bringing it, bringing staff report to us.
Thank you, okay.
I have those supporting.
I can try and read it, see if my voice holds up. I move that we adopt ordinance number sixteen eighty-four entitled Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending chapters two point two eight, two point three two, two point three six, two point four zero, two point four two, and two point four three of the Code of the City of San Clemente relating to the Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Golf Course Committee, Human Affairs Committee, Coastal Advisory Committee, and Investment Advisory Committee, respectfully.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Passes five oh. I'll read it, I'll move to adjourn. So, I'll move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting, which will be held on February eighteenth, 2020, in the council chambers located at one hundred Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California. Closed session items will be considered at five PM, and the regular business meeting will take place at six PM.
I think I heard the city attorney say that it would change.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, this does change, so you'll be adjourning to an adjourned regular council meeting, which will be held on February eighteenth. From four thirty to five thirty would be the BDK budget.
Okay.
At five thirty will be closed session, and then the regular business meeting will commence at six.
Okay, so I adopt what you said.
Okay.
That's my motion. All right. Motion is second, the amended motion, all in favor? Aye. Passes five oh.